Thank you for joining us this evening. Albany's City Council meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025 at 6:15 PM. I now call the meeting to order, and would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Next on tonight's agenda, we have a very special event. Councillor Van Dremelin was selected by the City Council to fill the seat vacated by a former councillor Jackie Montague. So now we'll have the oath of office for City Council Ward 2A, councillor Chris Van Dremelin. Eric, please administer the oath of office.
Stand right there. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Van Dremelin.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And support the Charter and ordinances of the City of Albany.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Councillor for Ward 2.
And that I will commit to faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Councillor for Ward 2.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Of the City of Albany during my continuance therein.
Congratulations.
Please go ahead and take some pictures with their family, please. Somebody take some pictures of his family with him. Big deal. City Recorder, may we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Newton Azor.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Here.
Councillor Van Dremelin.
Present.
Councillor McLeod.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
And councillor McGee is excused.
She has a personal matter she's dealing with. Thank you very much for the roll call. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Council?
I've moved to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Thank you, council. Next, we have a series of public hearings, so we have a workday today. And so, let me go to the right sheet. Next on tonight's agenda is the public hearing on the state shared revenue. Directions for how to testify and submit written materials will present, publish on the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:18 PM. Does the staff have a report for us?
So there's no presentation tonight on this one. Essentially, what you guys are doing is just adopting or approving resolutions that show that we are eligible to receive state shared revenues and then allocating those state shared revenues. And the state shared revenues are about 1.5 million for this biennium.
Council? So there was no written material submitted by the deadline for the public hearing. No one registered to speak at this public hearing. Does anyone in the audience who did not register wish to speak? Hearing none. I declare a public hearing closed at 6:19 PM. Council, any discussion? So I had a question. Counselor, anybody have anything? So can you tell the public what shared revenue we're talking about?
Yeah, do you want to take that one, Gina?
Sure. So we receive funding from the state for cigarette taxes, alcohol taxes, marijuana taxes. And then some of that is based on what we have here in the city. And then they also have this very complicated formula that they use based on population and amounts that come in and how much we collect that they distribute to cities and counties, I believe, throughout the state. So it's all those kinds of funds that we're collecting for taxes.
That include gas tax?
It includes gas tax, yes. Now, gas tax can be used only for transportation or streets, so that one is a little bit unique.
Any discussion now, council? Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion?
I would move to adopt both resolutions in one vote, declaring eligibility to receive state shared revenues and electing to receive state shared revenues as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for both resolutions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, council. Motion passes. Next on tonight's agenda is the adoption of 2025... Nope, that's not, we've gone too far. Oh, that's the budget, okay. That's it. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for the adoption of the 2025-2027 Biennial Budget. Directions for how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:21 PM. Does the staff have a report?
Yes, I do have a presentation for this one, and I promise you it is not a three-hour presentation this time around, but I did want to hit on some highlights tonight because I know we went through some pretty extensive conversation with the Budget Review Committee a couple of weeks ago. So I just want to consolidate that, and there were also some changes that came out of that Budget Review Committee. So I do want to address those as well. So, sorry, there is a delay in this. So, as we're looking at the presentation tonight, I am going to just very briefly go back over that budget process, particularly given we have a new council member joining us now who was not a part of those conversations. I'm then going to spend a little bit of time on what does this budget do. I think that that is a key question that we get often from our residents, either through phone calls, email, social media, really wanting to know what is it that their money is paying for? Where is it going? I will then spend some time on the low-income assistance program. Given that we are very close to another round opening for that application, I want to spend some of that time talking about that program and how people can get access to it. And then I will end on next steps and then action that we need from council tonight because there are a couple items, both from this public hearing and some items coming later in the agenda that we will need council action on tonight. So giving that delay there. So just a reminder that as part of this 25-2027 budget recommendation, this does mark a shift towards a strategic budgeting process. So recognizing that the budget is, in fact, the largest policy document that the city adopts in a given year and that it should really work in conjunction with council's strategic plan. So you can see there that strategic budgeting cycle there. Council through the strategic plan and various other plans that are adopted throughout the years really set that policy, set that tone, that direction, and that they want to see the city go in. When it comes to the actual budget creation, that is where the city manager is really working through with the departments to create a recommendation based on a holistic assessment of really the resources that are at the disposal of the city in order to provide a recommended balanced budget to the council in regards to how we deliver on that vision, deliver on that direction. You then see they're moving into that execute phase. That's the work plans that the city does, as well as the monitoring, reporting, and changes that are made throughout. So one of the things that we talked about extensively in the Budget Review Committee a few weeks ago is you're really going to see a shift this year towards a more nimble budget in this biennium. So supplementals are not a scary thing. Supplementals are a way for us to respond to additional direction from council, additional resourcing that comes in, and really be more nimble and adaptive to what is a very quickly changing environment for local government budgets, not only in Oregon, but across the country. And then finally, some emphasis there on that engage piece. Very important that we work through engagement. We talked a little bit about how some of that budget engagement is going to roll out over the next several months with the City Budget Unmasked branding and marketing that's going to be happening. But a key piece of that is also getting feedback from the community on what they want to see in terms of that strategic plan that will be rolling out later this year in order to set you up as council for a really robust discussion in the spring, which will then, in turn, set us up again for that cycle. So really a continuous conversation happening here. Sorry, there's a delay here. So a little bit of a reminder on the actual process. We did talk about this extensively last time, so I'm not going to go quite as deep. We did talk about, it's now nine months that we've been into this budget process and 1,500 hours of staff time, significant discussion over the last few weeks with the Budget Review Committee in regards to what that looks like. But essentially, that started way back in October, doing a current state assessment of all of the resources, all of the needs for the city, and really looking at what were those major factors that were going to drive some of the budget discussion over the next several years. So things like inflation, increases in electricity, things like growth projections for the city. Then moved into that needs assessment at the department level, where departments were really digging in, doing that analysis, looking for ways and opportunities where they could be more efficient or use resources more wisely. I think an excellent example of this is really that On the Move program that Parks and Recreation recommended forward, really to bring that more intimate concert series to neighborhood parks throughout the community so people can see in their own backyard what their tax dollars are going towards. We then moved into that refinement phase. Those were those extensive, many hours of discussions between departments, the city manager's office, and finance, really looking for ways that we could be more efficient, work together, not be siloing in order to maximize the dollar moving forward. And then finally, getting into that alignment phase in the last several weeks, so coalescing that recommendation, working with the Budget Review Committee, listening to that feedback. We did, as you will note in your packet, go in and provide the adjustment for the $35,000 for the support for the library materials. So this budget recommendation tonight does include that and is based on that motion moved forward by that body for the $14.82 city services fee. So that means that I did promise I wanted to talk a little bit about what does this budget do for Albany because I think that oftentimes gets lost, right? When you're looking at a budget document, it's oftentimes a lot of numbers and it's really hard to know what's happening behind there. So first and foremost, I want to say that the budget recommendation before you tonight does maintain city services, as well as make some key investments that I'm going to talk a little bit about here. So there are those investments in Parks and Recreation. We have heard repeatedly from residents and from council a desire to see more investments in recreation, particularly in the maintenance and upkeep of our parks. So this recommendation does include that additional parks maintenance worker. It does include that reorg of the Parks and Facilities Manager to a Parks Manager to provide more capacity and oversight over there, as well as some of the contracts, including Waverly Lake Maintenance, as well as transient camp cleanup. Really trying to shift our parks workers more back to what they were hired to do and be able to upkeep those parks to the quality that our residents desire. Also, as I mentioned, does include that support for the library with the $35,000, as well as the funding for the facilities and programs assessment to help the library understand where they want to go, where the community wants to go over the next several years, so we can make targeted investments in that group. We did also address some public safety items, particularly with the add of the additional patrol officer and the detective. And then we also have recommended in here increases in the infrastructure maintenance, particularly in stormwater, as we bring on some additional staff now that we are collecting on stormwater fees in order to support the maintenance of that infrastructure throughout the city. We also are prioritizing engagement. I talked a little bit about the City Budget Unmasked a little bit ago, but we're also already moving forward and looking at options for the Citizen Civic Academy in order to be able to provide more insight into city operations, help build that trust with the city government and with residents so that they can understand how those operations work, what that looks like in their community. Also, significant emphasis on automation. We talked extensively in the last Budget Review Committee meeting, and I'm actually going to capture two of these at the same time, about some of the key challenges that are happening from a personnel standpoint right now. We have a huge wave of retirements that are going to occur in the next few years, particularly in this first year, that are really going to suck the organization of a lot of institutional knowledge and could have significant impacts on our ability to deliver services. At the same time, personnel is one of our most expensive... Excuse me, it's not one of the most, it is the most expensive ongoing cost for the city. So we're looking at automation as a way to bring that cost down long-term, as well as address some of those gaps that would occur otherwise with turnover. Really trying to turn something that could be a challenge into an opportunity for the city to set itself up long-term. So some of the examples of this were, you know, the Monday.com automation. That was based off of a pilot program that has already saved the city $70,000 in hard costs and 360 hours of staff time, as well as agenda management and some other pieces there. And then, I've kind of hit on this already, but really looking at reducing long-term costs, but also opening up new avenues for revenues. Whenever we get to a discussion around addressing fees, that does not come lightly. So there was extensive conversation and build-ins put into the models for things like the exploring options with our franchise agreements, our IGAs, also looking at our community development fees in the coming year, all as avenues of other revenue sources coming in to help drive that need down to increase the city services fee. Had staff not done that work, we would have been looking at a much higher, around $28.86 for an increase there. So just wanted to capture some of that because I know a lot of times that budget can be a mystery, not just for council members, but for our staff as well and for our residents. And I really want to be as transparent as possible here. I'm also very excited because we're going to be really moving towards a more engaging and transparent budget moving forward, which I'll talk about in a minute. But I almost forgot about our low-income assistance slide. So I just wanted to take a moment because I know this was a significant concern, especially when you're talking about fee increases. And so I wanted to address low-income assistance because, as you'll see on this slide, the next round of applications are actually opening up on Monday, June 16th. So this is just as much for you, council, as it is for residents who may be watching right now. I do want to let residents know that if you are 60% or less of the state median income, which is on our website, you do qualify or could qualify for low-income assistance through the city and our partners at Community Services Consortium. And that does include up to four units of water monthly, as well as 50% off on the city services fee. And that is indexed in the resolution to move alongside the city services fee. So I just want to make that very clear that that is available. We actually did a lot of work to try to remove some barriers and paperwork. So if you are a resident who did apply for that in prior years, maybe struggled with that, now is the time to go back, take another look. I did include a QR code on there for anyone who's watching, as well as the website and the phone number for our partners over at Community Services Consortium, really to help people navigate to that resource. And then, sorry, there's a little bit of a delay here. Okay, so looking ahead, what are we looking at for next steps in regards to the budget? So as soon as the budget is adopted, we will be starting on that work for budget outreach. One of the first events that our communications and engagement team is actually working on having some budget input at is our Fun in the Park. So really trying to capture parents while they have their kids there, go to where they're at, to help them start to understand what does that look like to launch some of those programs? What does it look like to maintain some of our parks? We'll then move into the summer where we will be still continuing that budget outreach, but we will also be working on that launch of the digital budget book. So we talked about it extensively. We're in a transition period right now, moving to a book that is going to allow us to be more of storytellers, narratives, help unpack what is it that this budget does for you, taking it from being that list of numbers to something that people can interact with. Council members will be able to go in, check that, drill in, so will our residents. We'll then move into that October financial update. So we did mention last time as part of that transparency, engagement, education effort. We are going to be rolling out quarterly joint updates of the financial updates, as well as strategic plan progress. And then in November, you'll see that strategic planning kickoff. That's for that next strategic plan period. And then that strategic plan update occurring in March and April with a penciled-in supplemental budget there because we expect there may be some changing priorities with some shifts in the membership here on council. And so we wanted to be prepared to be nimble and respond to that when that comes up. So with that, the action we are recommending tonight, first and foremost, as part of this budget public hearing, is that adoption of the recommended budget. And then later this evening, there will be some supporting resolutions, specifically the city services fee resolution, as well as the capital improvement plan resolution in order to allow us to move forward on that capital improvement plan. So with that, I will turn it over to you all.
Well, thank you for that. Was there any written material that came in for this particular part of the meeting? There was no written material. One person registered to speak for this meeting? I have the public comment, but I don't have the one for this one. There's so many of them over there. So Mr. Eric Rao, was one person to sign up to speak for the public hearing part of this?
Good evening. If there are other folks who'd like to speak who are signed up to speak on the sheet, I'm happy to wait until...
This is the only one, but I will give folks in the chambers that didn't sign up an opportunity to speak as well.
Thanks, sir.
There are a three-minute time limit.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name's Eric Rao. I'm an Albany resident. I have kids growing up in the Albany school system, and I am happy to serve on the Public Safety Commission for the city as well. And I'm here tonight to speak about, I think, three things in relation to the city service fee. And those three things are things that you've heard from other speakers already tonight: transparency, and change, and complexity. And I think that when a lot of folks look at a fee, right, added on to a bill or providing revenue to a government, their instinct is to push back a little bit at that. And I would like to talk about the things that I think are in favor of having that fee there. First of all, the transparency is something that I have seen tonight. I've seen in numerous other occasions, folks doing outreach on the budget, making the budget available on the website, making tools to explore the budget available. You've got to put in a lot of time to understand it, right? And we'll come back to that point, I think. But I also want to provide credit where credit is due to the staff liaisons, to the Public Safety Commission for transparency. They provide not only a lot of statistics and a lot of explanation for those statistics, but when we on the commission ask questions, even if those questions, the answers to those questions don't put the departments in a favorable light, they're happy to provide answers to those questions, thorough answers, you know, with additional research as needed. And I certainly appreciate that as a transparency aspect. Change is another one. That's foremost in my mind now because I just met up with some old friends and showed them some pictures of my kids who they hadn't seen in a long time. And turns out, kids grow a little bit, as we saw tonight. And change, I think, is not news to anybody on this council or anybody who works in government, really anywhere. The changes in what we've asked government to do, the changes, as we alluded to earlier tonight, in the very uncertain revenue environment from the federal government, always dynamic revenue environment from the state government, and of course, all the things that are happening here at the city. And so as a resident, but also as somebody who's involved in public safety, I appreciate all of that change. I appreciate that we're asking staff and departments to do more than we have, and we're asking them to do it under a very changing circumstance. And I find that when we see something like the city service fee as a way to approach that, to solve the problem, that I appreciate that. I appreciate that because it assists with that change. And then complexity is the last thing. I've got about 30 seconds, so I'll try to land the plane there. And that is to say that most interactions that I think I've had and most interactions that perhaps most folks have with city services, city staff, are fairly simple, fairly straightforward. But the smaller number that folks have that are not straightforward, that are complex, and things from the first category quickly end up in the second category, right? If we're talking about staffing a fire station or staffing an ambulance, and we don't have enough folks to put on that ambulance, then taking an engine to respond to an ambulance call makes a simple situation very complex quickly. And so I appreciate that this is working towards that, and I've reached my time limit, so I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, Mr. Rao.
Well, he was the only person to register ahead of time. Does anyone in the audience that did not register wish to speak on this budget issue? Mr. Dennis?
Thinking my topic might be better here than in the comments from the public because...
We have the city services fee discussion coming up, too, later in the meeting.
But the budget would be adopted before you'd have a chance to discuss that. So it's like, is the order the correct order? Should we be talking about that before the adoption of the budget? As you know, three years ago, I first brought up the concern about the city services fee. I think only councillor Smith may have been on the council at that time. Everyone else is new, so they didn't have a chance to hear what I said three years ago. I questioned whether the city services fee was actually a tax. And I gave several examples in my testimony three years ago about how the City of Albany, or City of Albany, had a local option levy for ambulance and fire. They put it out for a vote. They didn't attach it to a utility billing. City of Corvallis voters put a local option levy on their ballot for Parks and Rec. They didn't attach it to the city utility billing. City of Portland also did the same. They put it out for a vote. So the question is, and at the time, Mr. Mayor, you gave me a legal opinion that was, came down from the Supreme Court where citizens had sued the City of Jacksonville over using the city services fee instead of a tax. And the Supreme Court of Oregon, or the state court, ruled in favor of the city. So clearly, the city has the right to increase this without a vote. But the question is, is it the right thing to do? And should an increase in this tax really go to a vote of the people? That's all I'm asking. And I suggest that you set aside this $3 million from the city services fee and put it on the next election, whether that's May or November. and put it on the next election, whether that's May or November, and let the people vote on it. And it may be that the citizens of Albany would vote yes, just in the same way that they did on the ambulance or the recent election, and that it would go through, and the city, the residents, would be in agreement with it. I'm just saying, a tax should be voted on by the people. That would be keeping in, kind of, in the vein of Ballot Measure 5 and 50 that was passed quite a few years ago to hold down property taxes. I use the word "tax" because, in my mind, a fee is something that you pay money and you get a direct return, or you get a direct service for that. I pay a fee for my water, I get water. You cannot directly tie this city utility fee to any service I'm getting. And that's why I call it a tax, and I believe it should be voted on. And then I'll speak on a separate matter during the other part of the public conference. Thank you.
Does anyone else in the chambers like to speak during this time? Please come up. This budget-specific talk?
It's about the budget review, recommended budget. My name is Maria Rice. And as the public, I just want to say that I was here as you were discussing the budget several weeks ago. And I asked several questions because it didn't seem clear to me. I was invited to come into the offices, various offices, to speak with people and receive some clarity. I appreciate the fact that you invited me to come in. And several of you spoke with me. And because of that, I now understand how you are coming to decisions regarding the budget and the service fees, which I'm 100% in support of. And I just believe, as the public, that it's the councilor's responsibility to just make sure that the people in their wards understand exactly how you are making these decisions. So I like the fact that you are being transparent. And I can tell you that there are some cities within the state of Oregon that do not give the public the option to attend the actual council meetings, as well as be able to see it online. And so I appreciate the fact that you really are trying to be transparent. And we've elected you, you represent us, and I think at this point, you all are doing a great job. I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate your efforts. I know the budget, it's extremely time-consuming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Does anyone else in the chambers like to speak to the council? I declare the public hearing closed at 6:45 PM. Councilors, any discussion? Did you want to talk about what was said before, or what would you like to do?
Yeah, I mean, I can respond to you, just in the interest of education, transparency, helping people understand. And I do have my business card here as well. So if Mr. Dennis wants to get that after the fact, I'm happy to sit down and provide some additional clarity. So it is a very difficult space, right? To understand the difference between a tax and a fee. And I'm going to do a very high-level job of it here. But essentially, when you're talking about a tax, what you're looking at is something that is calculated. I'm going to use property taxes as an example. We're starting with a value for a property, and that is determining a tax, which is then feeding into, here's a funding source that's available to the city. Now go figure out how you're going to use it. The way that a fee actually works is in the opposite direction. So what we're doing is assessing what the cost is of these critical services. So in the case of Oregon, you are allowed to use a city services fee on things like fire, police, parks, library, et cetera. We're looking at what that cost is, and then working backwards to, okay, what is the amount that is required to make that service happen? It's a very nuanced piece, and I can see where that is very, you know, confusing for our residents and where it can feel oftentimes like a tax. But I do want to provide some of that clarity, and I'm also happy to sit down. Like I said, brought plenty of cards tonight, happy to sit down with anyone, one-on-one, walk through any of those pieces, try to answer some of those questions. So, yeah.
I'll open it for council. Counselor, discussion? Counselor Smith?
I have a comment about the city services fee. Yes, I was here three years ago when that discussion happened. And yes, I was the person who made the motion to adopt the $9 fee in '21. And I did that because there is a difference between this fee and a tax. Taxes, as the deputy city manager pointed out, are assessed on property. They are paid by property owners. Not everyone is a property owner, and not everyone contributes to the taxes that support some of the city services. The city services fee is assessed against everyone who has a utility account. That's a much larger cross-section of the community. It reaches nonprofits, schools, other water and sewer customers who don't pay property taxes. But they do receive the same services. And those services are direct services. You call 911, you want somebody to show up, whether it's for a crime or a medical emergency. You use the city parks. You go to the library. All of those things receive parts of the city services fee, and many of those services would not be possible if it wasn't in place. I still support it. I support the increase. I pay it myself, and all of my neighbors do. And I depend on those city services to keep me safe and content to live here. So I just wanted to explain the difference, and that there are direct services tied to it, and it does reach a broader portion of the population than just property taxes. Thank you.
Does the council have anything? Counselor Snootnazar?
Yeah, so I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. Mayor, you mentioned that we're going to be voting on the city services fee separately. I didn't see that on our agenda.
If it's on there.
As separate?
Yeah, it's a resolution coming later. So per the ORS, the budget requires a public hearing. So that's why we have to put it earlier in the meeting.
Okay, but so this is the public hearing for?
For the budget, yes. And I did talk about it because they're so deeply entwined, as Mr. Dennis pointed out. They do go hand-in-hand, right? The budget is, and the initiatives that are part of that are driving that city services fee conversation that comes later on. But yes, they do have to be...
There's technically not a public hearing for the...
No, so because, yeah, the budget, sorry. So per our ORS, the budget does require a public hearing. So that's why that's going first.
Okay, so I'm still concerned about the low-income assistance program.
Yeah.
And I'm really hesitant to increase any fees when I'm not seeing the results of like this revamped low-income assistance program. And I'm wondering, when do we think we'll see some results? I'm very curious about that.
Yeah, so I mean, we did just let Community Services Consortium know to remove that additional barrier about a two-week period ago. So this is going to be the first applicant period coming up on Monday, where they will have that reduced applicant space there. So I imagine it would probably take at least a few cycles to see some of that. But we're already ripping and ready to go on getting some of that information out there, doing what we can to direct people towards this. And I do also want to remind, for the later item, the city services fee changes would not occur until August, because we do want to provide plenty of time for people to go out, apply for that assistance, and work through that.
Okay, so we wouldn't have any data or no, like, are we going to reach out to people that were previously denied?
So unfortunately, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any data any time sooner than that, until we have an applicant period, but doesn't have that additional space.
How long is the applicant period?
Yeah, so they leave, so when they do an application, they leave it open for about a week. And the reason that they do that, we talked a little bit about this last time, is because they kept seeing, when they left it open for a very long time, they'd get a lot of last-minute applications. There'd be a lot of issues with them, and people would end up inadvertently getting denied because things weren't filled out properly. So what they've now moved to is they do a one-week period where they have people apply. And if you do lose your job in between that, or something comes up, they will allow applications outside of that period. But they try to focus people into that one-week period. That gives them time to go through all of the applications, work through, okay, am I missing something? Is something on here not making sense? Are we, is there something that is going to get this person potentially denied? What they'll do is they will reach out to that applicant, work through with them. Is it something of, you know, we're just missing documentation? We need to get that corrected. Is it an issue of, you know, the name being incorrect to the bill? Okay, hey, you need to get that rectified with the city. Let's get that resolved. So that they are able to get that processed before that next period comes, where they would be receiving a bill. So they've basically just moved that process forward so that they can move through those.
So the process is opening, you said, in about a week? And then it's a one-week period? And then we would know how many people applied and how many people are receiving assistance, correct?
So we would, I think it would probably be a little bit. You're not going to know at the end of that very first week. So what they're going to go through, they not only get applications for us, they get applications for the entire area that they are providing services for. So when you look at the grand scheme of applications across all of their other programs, they're processing about 700 applications. So they will look through all of that. We will then get a report out before that August period of who qualified, and alongside that, the application numbers. So we would know, as we were going into that first period, what were the application numbers, what were the credits that were issued.
So, and then I want to understand, so it does feel, it feels a little cart and horse. So the budget as written is currently hinging on the resolution that we're voting on later.
Yes.
And it's, so it feels weird to do that. So if I, yeah, so I don't disagree with everything in the budget, but I'm really hesitant to add that change when I just haven't seen the results just yet, especially since it isn't going, to be going into effect until August. I kind of want to...
Well, and I think one of the things that we also talked about during the Budget Review Committee is if we still don't see results from some of the changes that are being made and the outreach that we're doing around the low-income assistance, remember that this is a budget that is built to be nimble. And we've talked about where we could work with supplementals, where we can look in terms of some of the adjustments that are being made in there to apply additional capacity in some key areas that have kept us from being able to have some bigger conversations. So if we weren't seeing results, I think it would be perfectly within the purview, and not just the purview, but I would even go so far as to say probably a recommendation for council to direct staff to put some additional work into re-looking at that program holistically. That would be a pretty significant lift, which has been one of the major barriers to that program in the past, is you've just simply not had the staff capacity to get out of, you know, keeping, you know, heads above water on the day-to-day to be able to do some of that deeper analysis on, okay, if we were to look at other changes to the program, more in-depth changes to the program, what could that look like and bring that back for council to consider? So certainly, if we see, you know what, the numbers are not moving, because we have asked them for monthly data, so that we can get that for each cycle and be able to be proactive on looking at that, that we can let council know pretty quickly. And in fact, we could probably preemptively put it into some of the city management update on what does that performance look like, and whether or not we need to have that conversation about going further.
Add a couple, you got anything else, council? Counselor Thompson?
Well, yeah, I do have a couple. Are we getting to the final? People getting close to a vote?
No, I've got some questions too. I'm going around the dais.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you know, I want to just rehash kinds of things I said during the Budget Review Committee. This isn't black and white. You know, this is a huge document. It's a founding document of our organization. And I enjoyed, not enjoyed, I liked, and I said this two weeks ago, I liked the changes at parks and creating a position that's more frontline with the committee. I like that. I really like to hear the, going through the changes with the franchise agreements and the IGAs and creating some capacity there. Kind of surprised that if we hadn't done that, you said a $28? That'd be a $28 or a $20 fee?
Yeah, so...
That's dramatic, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where I talk about, we don't take it lightly when we get to a fee conversation. So when we were looking at very early in that process and realizing, okay, the resources don't even cover what we've seen to maintain services from an inflationary period. We're looking at what some of those efficiencies are, where we can make some adjustments, but we're just not going to get to that mark. We started conversations pretty early on about what are some other avenues that we can start to tap? And what are the barriers to tapping those? That's a lot of where some of the capacity, some of the process improvement conversations. You'll remember, we talked a lot about Munis Reset. And that was one of the items in there. That's our primary financial and personnel system. That's been a significant barrier to some of those assessments that we want to do around franchise fees, IGAs, et cetera, because it is so incredibly cumbersome to pull information out of our system as it's set up today. That something that should take two hours to pull and review actually takes 20-plus hours in many cases. It's, I have never had a system quite like it, and I hope to never have a system like that again. But what that does is when you're spending so much time just trying to get the data out of the system, you then can't have those conversations about, okay, what does this look like? And I, we have already built into some of those models in order to bring down what that long-term cost looks like. That was pretty key for me, and I'll just use an example of some of that untapped potential there. So we had a rather low-hanging fruit OSU IGA that we renew every year for some services that we provide for them. We were able to take some look at that as part of our assessment of, okay, where could we go potentially with IGAs? And we were actually able to increase the cost recruitment from them by 50% on that IGA. And that is something that we had never had the ability to do. And that is a very tiny IGA in the grand scheme of the 70-plus IGAs that the city has. And so there's a lot of untapped potential there. We've built in some, you know, best educated estimates of where we might go. Same thing with our community development fees, franchise agreements. And then also, there's some really big projects that have never been possible before. We talked a lot about the Civic 501(c)(3), right? Being able to investigate, tap into, okay, we have these key areas, arts being the one that sort of started this conversation of, hey, we want to be able to get more funding for arts. What is an avenue for that? Okay, historically, we've directed that group towards grants. Okay, we're digging in now, we're seeing, okay, grants are not necessarily an option here in the state of Oregon, because Oregon, unlike many other states, limits their arts grants to only 501(c)(3)'s. We don't have a 501(c)(3) for that group. And that evolved into a conversation, how can we make that better? Rather than just doing a 501(c)(3) for arts, let's do a Civic 501(c)(3), so that we open up funding potentials for the arts, HRC, some of those other big projects that we have not been able to do in the past. And that's the kind of analysis that, when you're not underwater, you can start to have on some of those conversations. What can we do? What are the investments we can make today? Let's start to drive that expense line that's moving like this, more like this, so that it is more manageable and less of an increase over time. But that's why we recommend some of the very strategic investments in various areas is to unlock that potential and address that. But yeah.
Yeah, and I wanted to highlight that. Like I said, this is not black and white. There are many good things. And I'll go back to, we had a presentation before this council from Rich Kellum, who has a little charity he's created. And his premise is that this organization and local governments are stuck in a cycle of doing the same thing over and never being able to. And so it just, what you just said just shines a light on that. And I know what you did recently is a more dramatic example. But over the years, being on the Budget Committee, I heard of many different examples of people constantly doing more with less, which gets into what I want to say. What I said two weeks ago is, and I understand the frustrations with workload, kind of big picture. And that's where I felt like the changes in the budget, not just this two-year cycle, but two years previously, have been geared towards positions like here at City Hall versus out in the community. And that's where my problem with the budget kind of focuses on. I mean, we didn't have a discussion of, I understood going from nine to 13, I believe, would be a stay-the-same budget, in terms of the city service fee. And so when it came before me at the Budget Review Committee, everyone, out of 14 people, everybody was already decided that, hey, we're going to pass this with a 1482. And that's why I said, no, I just, I can't go to 1482 on the city service fee. And if that's the question again before us, I'll say no. But I just want to be clear, if it was 13, and especially if you explained, or the city manager explained, what would we, we would be missing if we didn't, we just left it at nine, let's say. If you really put it before us, what we would be missing, what we'd have to cut, that would probably change my attitude as well.
I mean, and I can talk to some of that, because that is part of the assessment that we had to do, right? Because it's not a guarantee that we get in front... Because it's not a guarantee that we get in front, we make the recommendation. Obviously, you know, staff is working with the best information they have, but certainly the council has to respond to some of the pressures and things that they're hearing from the community as well. So if we had not done that or made that recommendation, what we would be looking at is a cut of an equivalent of 11 positions throughout the city. And I say an equivalent of 11 positions because that is based on an average salary plus benefits load. So depending on what type of position, it may be more, it may be less. Where that gets complicated is where that ends up happening. And that's going to, and I, I don't want these groups to come after me. But that would ultimately end up primarily being in parks and library. And I want to walk you through why that would be the case. So we talked extensively in that last Budget Review Committee meeting about the overtime issue in fire and that we are starting to see that overtime issue in police. So if we were to cut positions in those two groups, we are immediately pushing that overtime up even higher, so it doesn't actually yield us any of those savings. When you get to some of the positions in, in city, the city hall-type positions that you're talking about, so those are not general fund positions, those are internal service fund positions. They actually get funded through a number of, of various sources because they provide services out to our enterprise funds as well. So when you're looking at those, in order to get the same return on one single FTE for a position that is in the general fund, you are looking at having to eliminate 2.5 positions, it's actually 2.4-something, positions within an internal service fund function. So that's where you start to get back to, in order to reach that number, you're starting to have major impacts on parks and library programs to the point that that would, quite frankly, be very detrimental to the continuation of those programs. And this is why I'm like, I don't want to say that lightly and have them come after me, but those are very real conversations that, that we had to have. I do want to talk a little bit to the investments and kind of the recommendations and, and personnel. So we did make some very conscientious efforts based on what we heard back from the community, what we'd been hearing from council for, for many, many months, to really start to look at where could we get some opportunity in those, those is, you phrase it, I believe, outward-facing or frontline-facing positions. So you see that with the, the parks maintenance worker, the reorg of the parks manager, those police positions, the facilities maintenance, all of those that are happening in there. But we also made those strategic investments in those internal service funds positions because what we heard over and over and over and over again is that those were the stopping point, the pain point, the barrier that could not be crossed in order to get a lot of this long-term work done that will allow us to bring on more of those frontline positions. So when we're looking at long-term, as we start to tap away at things like IGAs, start to tap away at some of those franchise agreements, really looking at where are those other places that we can bring in additional revenues, that opens up opportunities in the future for us to deal with growth, because we are projecting out that the community is going to continue to grow, there's going to continue to be more of a demand on our parks, more of a demand on our public safety services. So we expect that we're not going to be able to sit in the same space that we are today in two years, four years, 10 years down the line. So that starts to open up the opportunity for us to bring in that support without those frontline positions, without addressing or having to make these big increases in city services fee in the future. The other thing that that, the other piece of that is a lot of the extremely, and I'll quite frankly say it, extremely broken processes that have not been able to move forward are stuck in those central services because for a very long time, we did not make those investments. And we also went so far several years ago to say, you know, we're kind of eliminating out essentially that middle management position, which I, I understand, right? Let's put, there's a concerted effort there to, let's get more of that frontline out. But what ended up happening is we bled the expertise that was needed in order to do that analysis. So what you're talking about, here are some of these things with the franchise agreements, the IGAs, talking through 501(c)(3)'s. A lot of that has honestly been possible because we ended up, I got hired, ended up pulling an extensive knowledge pulled in from, from other spaces. I only have limited capacity. We're now seeing Jen, our new budget manager, who's now running with more of that, and our accounting manager, who are running with more of that. So we actually expect that we're going to see some pretty significant process improvements over, over this biennium, which is already built into some of that factor and in turn ultimately results in less time that these outward-facing departments are spending in bureaucratic rigmarole so that they can get back to doing the work that they were hired to do. And it also opens up more of that funding long-term so that we can bring those positions on hopefully more quickly and more in line with the growth that the city is actually seeing without having to go back and do that tap on the city services fee. Because we don't use that lightly. That is, you know, like I've mentioned several of those areas that we've already looked at, already built in, in order to tap that down from that, that 2886. It, it's, it's not something that we want to get to on a regular basis, so.
Thank you.
Councilor McLeod?
Thank you. I think a lot of good points have been made tonight about the budget. Can you, can you speak more to the, to the city services fee? Specifically, the, the low-income assistance portion and that it's, just to clarify, the, the city services fee is reduced by 50% for, for those on the low-income assistance program. Can you speak to how that 50% was determined, why it's not reduced more or less?
I wouldn't be able to speak to why we chose 50%. Do you, do you remember why it was 50% several years ago? I wasn't here.
When we worked with the consultant on establishing the city services fee, that is what came out of all the work that they did with us, was they thought the 50% was kind of the sweet spot.
It seems to me that if, if people on the low-income assistance program are, are truly watching every penny, I, I don't, I don't see why they should be charged the fee at all, frankly. I, I also think that there's been some, some great, some great topics that have, that have been brought up regarding the budget. I just want to clarify, the city services fee, we're voting on separately from the budget. Is that, is that correct, sir?
Yeah, it's legally required that we do it that way.
That we do it that way. And so tonight, we're voting on, we're voting on both of these things, but we're voting on them separately. And with the budget, should we, should we vote on the budget and not pass it tonight? What is, what is happening next if that happens?
Let me ask, is the major sticking point here, the, the low-income assistance portion of the, of the city services fee, is that what I'm hearing is sort of that primary piece?
I, I'm just asking a point-of-order question regarding passing the budget.
Mr. Merrick, can I offer?
Please.
You'll remember, I, I understand, it does feel a little bit like the cart before the horse, to have the budget be heard before the city services fee, which the budget depends upon. But if you go back to the Budget Review Committee meeting, you'll remember that it was a fairly, was a 13-to-1 vote to advance the budget as it was with the city services fee at, you'll remember it was 1477, and then there was talk amongst the Budget Review Committee about making it 1482 to help the library. So the reason the city services fee hearing, or the city services fee resolution is after this is because that's taken as direction. Now, it's certainly possible that the council might have changed their, their opinion over time. And if they decide not to pass the city services fee tonight, we'll have to make adjustments for it. But the reason it's being held now after the hearing about the budget is because that direction had already been received. And as far as expanding the low-income assistance program, that's a direction that the whole council would have to give. You'll remember, some of you will remember when Deb Gialdi, our consultant, was here talking about it when we were creating it four years ago, there was a sliding scale and you could have simplicity on one hand and, and complexity and equity on the other extreme. So somewhere in between there is where we landed, trying to make it a mix, a blend of simple and equitable. To be much, much more equitable, as Councilor McLeod suggests, will, will require the council to direct that because it will make, it will substantially change how we have to administer the, the whole, the whole fee.
So again, what happens if we don't pass the budget tonight? Does it, does it then?
We have to bring it back.
We would have to bring it back next week.
No, next, two weeks from now.
Oh.
Is it 18th?
The 18th is one week from now.
So we do need to have, so, and we do need to get the, we do need to get the city budget passed because ultimately, if we don't have a city budget, the state of Oregon, unlike other states that allow you to operate under your budget from the prior year, state of Oregon has made it where you stop. Like, we cannot operate on July 1 if we don't have a city budget. Now, that being said, the reason I was asking, is the, is the primary sticking point here, the, the low-income assistance portion of that city services fee and making sure that we're, we're covering enough to, to support those residents? Is that, is that a fair assessment in what I'm hearing?
Well, I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
On your slide, it had 288 that were currently enrolled. Are they auto-enrolled in the new system?
No, so they do have to fill out the application every year, but once they are approved, that application is for that, that year, so.
And so, so one of the things I also am concerned about is the one-week period, can it be two weeks? So, because we're going to do a public outreach, right? We'll do public outreach, we'll be making videos and stuff like that into Instagram and getting out to my, my constituents and my clients. You think one week is enough time? That's my concern.
So the, the one-week period, that, remember, that is a period to allow Community Services Consortium to process not only our application, but 700 other applications that they, they receive. So that one is not going to be entirely, is not going to be entirely within our control on that regard, because we're not the only group going through them. And part of that was a deliberate decision by the council several years ago to create a one-stop shop, because when somebody goes through Community Services Consortium, they're not just hearing about our program, they're hearing about, about 11 other potential programs that they qualify for. Yeah.
And one more thing that just came to mind, I know that Republic Services was talking about doing a low-income program as well. Is that part of that discussion or is that separate from the cities?
So I would have to double-check what's on that list, but I do know they've got everything. They've got a number of different utility-type assistance programs for electricity, other, other spaces, so it's, it's a wide variety of, of assistance programs that they're looking at for people. Yeah.
I'm, I'm concerned that Counselor Dr. McGee is not here to give input. And so I, I'm, I'm really curious to hear what she would have said tonight.
Also, I have a quick question. The, you mentioned that with the, keeping the same city services fee, so I'm just trying to keep track of all my thoughts.
Absolutely.
We would lose 11 positions primarily in libraries and parks.
Approximately, because remember, it's based on that average of 11, but depending on what the positions are, maybe more, maybe less, yeah.
The new budget, we're adding 10 more positions.
Yes, but we're not adding 10 positions in the general fund. It's 10 positions overall, so many of those are in other funds, utility funds, the central services, which are paid out for multiple areas. They're not all in the general fund, so it's not a, it's not a one-for-one unless you're in that general fund space.
Okay, and 288, that's an accurate figure, because I remember that city manager, Peter Trodson, put in his Friday report a few weeks ago, they had like 168?
So that was because they just went, they just hit the end of the, so they have a big renewal period. This is going to be that big renewal period that is coming up. So they just reached the end of one period, so they always see a lapse right away and then they see that grow back up to around 288, 274 is kind of where it goes.
So still half a percent of residents in the city of Albany. That is absolutely unbelievable, that is half a percent.
Agreed.
Half of a percent, that is absolutely wild to me.
And it's difficult, because when we did reach out to, so if you'll remember, we did talk about in that city services fee conversation in the, in the Budget Review Committee, we had reached out to some other cities, asking about various programs. So a lot of cities, one, don't offer any discount on their city services fee, but for those that do, that is actually a pretty similar level of enrollment on those other cities. So it's a larger problem than just Albany for people accessing those resources.
If you could guess how many, what percentage of residents here in Albany do you think would qualify?
I would be taking a wild estimate if I tried to, to give that, but certainly there's, there's more than that who are living.
More than 0.48%.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would love to know that number as well.
Yeah, we can definitely get that number. What I was going to say earlier, and I apologize, were there any more questions before I kind of talk to?
I actually do have a question. And I, I like a lot of what I'm hearing in terms of the long-term investments in the stability of the city. Long-term cost containment is kind of a big deal for me. So we heard some about like what in the short term that looks like, like what that could have looked like in terms of the city services fee at potentially up to $28, which is a wild increase from $9 down to the current proposal at, at 1482. I was wondering if you could talk at all, even in general terms, I know you're not going to be able to give specific numbers for things beyond kind of this biennial budget, but with some of the strategic moves that, that the city would like to take that will reduce long-term costs, like is there an outlook on how that will help us keep the city services fee increases reasonable long-term? Like what's, what's kind of the outlook beyond, beyond this biennium with some of these moves?
Yeah, so one of the things that I did is, is part of going through, looking at what this might look like over time, how those costs evolve, is really looking at, okay, if we look at inflation kind of over that period, what is that cost just on the services that we have today in those, in those qualifying areas? How much are we going to lose ground just in, in say inflation, something that is completely out of, out of our control? So what we would be looking at over that kind of next sort of 10-year period, based on what we have for inflationary, you know, numbers projected, you're looking at losing another almost 18 million in, in ground. So over the period since the city services fee was initially adopted within the general fund, you saw a loss just to inflation alone of spending capacity or capacity to do business around 12 million because everything grows exponentially when you look at that over time. You're then looking at a larger number, it's just under 18 million over that, over that next period. So that's one of the areas that, that we looked at there. Does that, does that answer the question? I'm sorry.
Sort of. I, I was, I was thinking more along the lines of like what, what ground are we going to gain from, like beyond, beyond just the short term of like, well, instead of it being a proposed $28 increase to do what we want to do, it's 1482. Like, do you have any information on how this might potentially help us hold that city services fee down beyond this biennium?
Yeah, I think the, so there's a couple of things. So one, this is going to get us out of this cycle of doing this, because it is very expensive to start up programs, stop a program, repay those startup costs several years later when we manage to find something to be able to pay for it. So we're repaying over and over again to start the same programs over and over again. So that's going to be key. Where the biggest gain is going to occur is in modeling out based on the city services fee adjustment tonight, which is that 1482 with an index to inflation. As I'm building those models out, we're actually not looking at, and this is me going, unless the council does something wild, because I do not have a crystal ball, not looking at us having to do any increases outside of that index for inflation over the next minimum two bienniums. Get a little bit further out and it's harder to model that out, just because there's so much at the state level, the federal level that becomes out of our control in those spaces, particularly unfunded mandates. But that makes, that puts us in a position where we're not looking at a city services fee increase for quite some time. And a huge piece of that is those targeted investments in the technology piece and in some of those key positions that are going to allow us to address those other revenue sources. Because at the moment, we just don't have the capacity and skill sets to move those forward, which means we are leaving money on the table with developers, with other communities that could be helping to foot that bill for those services. And right now means that residents end up subsidizing more, you know, than their fair share. So by doing this, we start to move that needle and bring that more in line in having those groups pay properly for the services that they're using.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a huge change in what that looks like long-term.
Councilor Smith, do you have anything?
What are the programs we're going to start and restart?
Yeah, so a lot of, yeah, that's, that's great. Particularly in our parks, they are constantly having to reinvent the programs that they offer. They'll bring people on, they end up having to lay them off. That's actually part of why our director, Kim Ledain, when the city services fee was initially passed, opted to move that city services fee funding over to the um, the, um, capital side for their items, because she had gone through so many cycles of bringing positions on, eliminating them, having to rework, reduce hours, those pieces. Um, and so that's a lot of what I'm talking about there.
And COVID wasn't nice to the parks.
COVID was not nice either. Um, I certainly hope we never have to go, have to go through that again, yeah.
Uh, would a, would a council like to make a motion?
Can I put something, I, I wanted to push something out there, because I did see so many nods on the, on the city services fee and the low-income assistance, um, kind of being that, that barrier, and I know that the budget and the city services fee conversation later go in tandem. If that is the key sticking point here, I'd like to make a potential, recommendation to, to the council for consideration, um, on that, that motion later. Um, and that recommendation would be, if we can go ahead and get the budget passed now, when we get to the city services fee conversation, I think making a, potentially adjusting the motion for the recommendation on staff there, um, so staff has that recommendation, um, for it to be starting in August. I would make potentially a recommendation there to maybe delay that start. Um, so go ahead and, and do the increase, but delay that start out to October. Um, what that would allow us to do is to go back, um, and, um, my office, working with our utility team, look at what are some other options that we can bring you for that low-income assistance piece? Because overall, with the numbers being, um, as low as, as they are, making those adjustments from whether it's, you know, half-off to 60% off or to 70% off, those are not going to make or break the budget. So I don't want that conversation around low-income assistance, because I think it is perfectly, um, reasonable from years of experience from looking at our numbers, for us to sit down, it's just the legwork of, okay, what does that program look like? Um, so, my recommendation or thought that I'm throwing out is, if we can get the budget moved forward, that allows us to start addressing some of those capacity pieces, some of those pieces that really need to get moved forward, and then when we get to the city services fee conversation later, I would say amend that, so it's the 1482, delay that start out, um, to October, and then direct staff as part of that to bring back a recommendation for, um, a different program, um, perhaps with higher levels, because I do think that is fully within the, in the reality of, of what we, we could do. So it's just a matter of, of outlining exactly what that looks like.
So, could, could we have more than one outreach period, where we'd have the first week, see what that response looks like, and then us doing some outreach with our new team of people doing that kind of work?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but.
So, so, so we're talking about starting in October, correct? So.
That's what I'm proposing that we do as part of that, that later discussion of the, of the city services fee, is to lay that out to October. Um, the, if you're talking about the outreach period that community services consortium is, I would have to talk to them, and that's why I say the barrier is not the cost associated with changing that program.
Right.
Um, at least the amounts. Um, where it could become an issue is if, you know, we deviate too far, and it's something that community services consortium could no longer, um, provide for us, but the cost to go from, you know, 50% of it to 60% or 70%, which is fully within the city's control to do that, is not a barrier on low-income assistance, so I want to make that very clear. So there are movements that we could probably make, it's just a matter of us going behind the scenes, doing that work and bringing that back to council. If we delay to October, what that allows us to do is bring that conversation back to, um, council in July or August, get your, um, input on that amount that you want to go to, and then it gives us reasonable time to provide that outreach to the community before implementation in October, because there's always going to be a delay, if we've got to get it into our system. Um, and we've got to get that communicated, so that's where that October is coming from. It would essentially allow us to come back to you, July, August, get that squared away, and then, um, delay that implementation.
So, you're saying, just to make sure I'm understanding, you're saying with the, um, if we were to accept budget as is, then redo how we have the low-income assistance, especially for city services? So, just to play devil's advocate here.
Yeah, absolutely.
What if we went from 0.48%, like, not even half a percent of individual, of people here in Albany on low-income assistance? And then it went to 15%, 25%, wouldn't that have a greater impact on our budget?
Yes, but ultimately, the impact of not having the increase of the city services fee is always going to be greater than what that impact is from additional people taking on the low-income assistance portion. Um, so, ultimately, at the end of the day, there are options that we start to look at long-term, it may mean, you know, in our models, we're predicting being able to bring on some different pieces sooner rather than later, it may mean that we delay out some of those. But ultimately, it is more detrimental to not have the city services fee increase, not be able to get that work done, um, on some of these bigger-picture items that are meant to drive things down, than it is for us to increase. Um, I, I genuinely, from my experience of, of running these programs in-house and also, um, looking at some of the data, I think we will see some movement. Um, you know, we would see some movement with an increase, but I just don't think it is going to be these huge windfall numbers that we're hoping for, um, at least not out of the gate. I think that's a, a very lengthy conversation, trust-building that has to happen with the community. Um, and we're in a very difficult position right now for that, because trust in government is at an all-time low, um, right now, and trust in programs and providing information and handing that over is, is at an all-time low, so.
So, so, so we're just talking about the low-income portion of this, correct? Or the whole fee itself?
So, what I am proposing is, for the budget piece, we go ahead and get that passed, that way we can start to move those other pieces. When we get to the city services fee conversation later on in the night, um, and, um, we're doing a lot of that here, so, I won't spend too much time rehashing when we get to that point. Um, but when we get to the city services fee conversation later tonight, what I would recommend is council goes ahead, adjusts, amends the recommendation that is coming from staff on that to, one, delay the implementation from that August implementation to an October implementation. And as part of that, direct city staff to bring back a proposal for increased, um, assistance on the city services, uh, fee portion of that, of that assistance program. Um, and we can bring back some different options, um, that would just give us the time to do the due diligence, um, bring it back in July, early August, get that council, uh, feedback direction on, on, is this what you were looking for, um, and then still give us time to put it into our systems, get that communicated out to the community.
Counsel? Counselor Smith has a comment.
That makes sense, sorry.
Related to the, the low-income portion of the, the, I, I've, I've explained this to a number of constituents during my tenure here, and I, it's, the way I have it sorted out in my head is that the amount of the discount on the water portion of the utility bill is roughly 50% of the average usage in a single-family home. Average home is six to eight units, and we discount it by four units. So it's, it's easy to explain that along with the 50% reduction in the city services fee. The other thing that we haven't talked about tonight, I, it may have come up at Budget Committee, but I don't recall, is that one significant barrier to people applying for low-income assistance is pride.
And that's where I'm getting at. I don't think, I don't think we're going to see the numbers move very quickly, because the, the, in order to get past that barrier, that requires very intimate, one-on-one conversations. Um, that being said, if we're getting that out there in the spotlight, we are talking about things like the amounts and what that looks like, that gives an opportunity to have those inroads and, for council members to sit down with people in their ward, in, in, eh, sorry, words, in their wards and have that conversation about, look at what this level of benefit is for you. Let's talk about that, what does that look like, and same thing for our, for our city staff, um, as well as we're, we're going through that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Republic Services does have a low-income assistance program that's administered by their customer service staff.
It's in-house then.
It, yes, and CSC, uh, refers people who would qualify to, uh, Republic when they come in and apply for low-income help in other ways.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So, council, we have a motion?
Oh, I was, I was, it still feels very cart and horse for me. Just, just my perspective.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I apologize, I was, I was super close to my microphone. I said it feels very cart and horse to me still.
I would, I would prefer to have another week of input on this. Um, I'd like to hear more from the public, and I'd like to hear from, um, Councilor Dr. McGee.
So, what do we do with this?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
So we've got three, two, we need four votes, right?
Yep.
Yeah, motion fails, we need four votes.
So we'll bring it back. We have to continue the public, well, the public hearing is closed. We have to bring it back.
So, are we bringing it back at a?
Next week, 18th.
18th.
Thank you, Kayla, thank you, Gina. Uh, next, item C is planning, uh, Planning Division Fee Adjustments, David Martino, Matthew Rutgers, pages 29 to 33 in your packet.
Hello, David Martino, current planning manager. So, the difference in the CPI, Consumer Price Index, wage earners, urban wage earners, from, um, April of 2024 to April of 2025 is 2.09%. So you will note on the exhibit to the resolution that the fees that are proposed in the red font, uh, are fees that would be increased by an amount of 2.09%. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor Smith? Anything? Any other counselors? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to adjust the Planning Division fees as presented by staff by 2.09%.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, council. Motion's 42, 40, 40, nothing, yeah, or five, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Next on tonight's agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take the comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow, uh, follow, follow the council rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to take step down and take a seat in the audience until the rest, for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the, uh, microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany. Anybody sign up for public comment? Have some. This other one sits here. I have Brad on two sheets. Okay, so what I'm seeing is Brad Dennis again, Cynthia Hightower, and Maria Rice. Um, so you're talking, so have you already spoken, right, correct, Maria? Okay.
And you should see Sue on there as well.
Sue. I don't see a Sue. Have Lisa Grado. Where do you see Sue? Typed in, okay, I'm looking at handwriting. So I will start with Ms., or Sue Horvath. Thank you.
Do I start?
Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. My name is Sue Horvath, I live in North Albany, and as a consequence, I travel regularly through the new photo-enforced speed zone, which is outside of the, um, school, that's there in North Albany. Now, there are two schools that are in North Albany, one is an elementary and the other one is a middle school. And while I really appreciate that traffic has slowed down considerably since the photo enforcement was undone, I think there is a problem. And that problem is that when, um, on April 17th and 18th, the school, the middle school was in session, but the elementary was not in session. And when you're coming through the school zone, when you're coming through that 20 mile an hour zone, you cannot see the middle school. All you see is the elementary school. And if there are no big red, yellow school buses, there are no children on campus, and there are no teacher or admin, staff, um, cars in the parking lot, you might not know that school was actually in session. You can't see the school in back of the elementary school. So I'm wondering why we didn't implement something like this, which is a red, sorry, a red light which indicates that the 20 mile an hour speed limit is enforced and school is in session. Okay? It's all over the place, if you go to other cities, it's all over the place in Portland. And I think that there is no other way to tell by looking, by entering the speed zone, that school is in session if the elementary is not. So, I would really like to see this implemented so that people who want to be obeying the law there, which I think is the majority of people in North Albany, would have a fair chance of reducing their speed to 20 miles and, um, being compliant. Now, I'm, I'm telling you this because I got a ticket and I had to go, so, but I think there was no other way that I could know that school was not in session if I didn't see an indicator.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any question?
No, no, we, we don't engage, can you please give a copy of that to the city clerk? We read a recorder, excuse me.
We addressed during business from the council. We, we address, I mean.
Yeah, we addressed it during business from the council. So if you want to stick around, you can, we'll, we'll talk about it then.
Please do stick around.
Can you have a picture of that or take a picture of that, Eric, please? Unless you, unless you.
There are actually three pictures.
Just give them to him, please. Uh, next is Brad Dennis, I, did he just walk out?
He took off.
He did, okay. Cynthia Hightower?
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Cynthia Hightower. Thank you for taking my message. Um, I'm bringing up parking. Um, right now, I work at the Subaru of Albany. And North Shore is where we typically park. And there is construction coming, and we will not be able to park there any longer. They're closing the street. And we can't plant, park on South Shore, because there's no sidewalk between North Shore and South Shore. It's Airport Road, there's no sidewalk, so it's not safe to walk along that or traverse that area on the road. And then the other one is Oakwood, and it does have a no-parking signage on it, on both sides of the road. And I was wondering if we could get a temporary parking permit for just the duration of the parking, the construction going on on North Shore. And at that point, when it's done, then we can go back to parking there again. The other thing is that there, you do allow parking, per, temporary parking permits in the city. So, um, just want to bring that to fact, we can get a temporary parking permit for that street, on one side of the street, not both. Thank you.
Can you, Peter, can you give her a card, please? Our city manager will reach out to you.
I have talked, I have left the message with him.
Okay.
And with you.
Thank you.
For Ron Owens at the general manager at Albany Subaru. Thank you.
Next is Lisa Grado, Director of the Downtown Association.
Good evening, I'd like to do a quick downtown update for you. The Albany Downtown Association is celebrating our 43rd year. So our newsletter features a lot of information on that. And we are a Main Street organization accredited both. that. Um, and we are a Main Street organization accredited both statewide and nationally, and have been for most of that time as their organization stopped and ended, but ours didn't. So we continue trudging through the whole forty-three years. I would like to make a correction. On here, it says that we have received three grants totaling six hundred thousand dollars. As of yesterday, we now have received four grants totaling, um, a million dollars. That's in the last four years that we've brought, uh, grants back to Albany in partnership with, uh, local building owners. So we're exceedingly excited to share that Albany Civic Theater was selected by Oregon Heritage to receive the full four hundred thousand. This will be to, um, revitalize and, uh, do facade work on both, uh, the building that you, um, are familiar with as Albany Civic Theater and the attached building, um, next door. So you will be seeing lots of changes after the, uh, the ink is dry on the agreements, we run into the right fiscal year, and I get the green light. I think you will see lots happening, and, uh, we're so very excited about that. Um, other things to highlight, um, is that we have received eighteen state awards, um, starting back in, uh, twenty-eleven, uh, different businesses, um, throughout the downtown, uh, recognized by our Main Street statewide program. And lots of other fun things in this article talking about our different committees. Uh, Crazy Days is going to be a Christmas in July theme. It's coming up July tenth through twelfth. Um, our Meet the Neighbors, um, is another legacy business, um, theme, and this is Albany's Farmers Market at forty-seven years, and Davis Glass is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. There's a very short piece in memory of Russell Tripp. Um, I had, uh, the honor of knowing Russ and also attending his services recently. Um, he touched everyone, and there's just a few, uh, items here about what he did with the Downtown Association, and he's continuing to sponsor the Hanging Basket Program through his trust. Lots of other events going on. Make sure the kiddos get out and start their, uh, summer passport program with the Albany Visitor Association and other partners. Starts on June twenty-first at the Carousel. And don't forget to shop downtown for Father's Day. And coming up on the twenty-fourth is the annual Albany Garden Tour. And last thing, mark your calendar for the Craft Brew Smackdown Friday, August eighth. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Um, next, item seven, your agenda is, our item A is ordinance stormwater in lieu of franchise fee.
Can we, can we get a bio break?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We've been, let's take a ten-minute break. Be back at seven fifty-four. Sorry about that, Carolyn. Thank you. We're back in session. We have a few action items to work through. The first action item is an ordinance, stormwater in lieu of franchise fee. Uh, Robert Emmons, pages thirty-three and thirty-five of your packet. We're gonna hear from him, then we'll go into the ordinance.
I thank you, Mayor. So we just, uh, discussed this on Monday night in, in, in a little bit of detail, so I don't have a lot of further information to add, other than to just say, you know, reiterate a couple basics, that the in lieu of franchise fee for the stormwater would be set at seven percent, uh, of stormwater revenues to match that of the in lieu of franchise fees for water and for the sewer utilities. Um, so just everything would be on even par there, so, um, and that would, the revenue would be deposited into the street utility fund to be used for street maintenance and street needs. Um, yeah, I, that's about it. I can answer any other questions if counsel has.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Smith?
That was in the range of three hundred to three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
Correct. The estimate is, is three hundred and forty thousand.
Thank you.
Okay. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance a first time in title only?
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code Title twelve point three oh, Stormwater Utility by adding a new section, twelve point three oh, point zero five zero, in lieu of franchise fee, and declaring an emergency.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time, or ordinance for a second time in title only?
I'll move to have this ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Would the city attorney please read the orders a second time in title only?
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code Title twelve point three zero, Stormwater Utility, and by adding a new section, twelve point three oh, point oh five oh, in lieu of franchise fee, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, any discussion?
I, 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 actually, I do. Um, just, just to reiterate again, like we, we, we talked about on Monday, this is not a fee that is going on residents' bills, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And this is for new construction only, correct?
No, it's.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It would go into the street utility fund to be used for street maintenance needs, so be part of that street maintenance budget.
Okay. And, but, but this is not a new fee on water bills?
Correct. It is just an internal shifting.
Thank you.
Favorit. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so we've had some discussion. Any other counselors have any discussion? Thank you for bringing this to us on Monday. Um, it was very, very clear, and I really appreciated, uh, you giving us a description and detail around that, around this change. Would a counsel like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I, I move to adopt the, uh, ordinance as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, on tonight's agenda is Stormwater Drainage, uh, Development, System Development Charge, s- second phase end step. Robert, oh, you're not moving. So Robert Emmons, pages thirty-six to thirty-eight in your packet.
Yeah, we also discussed this on Monday. Uh, so this would be the second phase end step for the Storm Drainage SDC Charge. We're currently at the first step. This would be the second step. There are three more steps after this that we will bring to council each year for you to consider. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Counsel McCloud?
And again, this is not a new fee on residents' water bills, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution establishing the second step, or adopting the second step as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So city recorder, uh, next is item C, which is the City Services Fee. Do we move that to next meeting, or do we do it now?
You, uh, Kayla's ready to talk to you about it. She has a separate presentation.
Okay.
If you did, I mean, obviously, if you decide to, now the cart is actually after the horse.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, if we can have that clarification discussion, I think it would be, it would be good, um, because they don't want us to run into the same problem next week of, of cart before the horse. Um, because when we get to, and I shouldn't say next week, two weeks, the eighteenth, um, because when we get to that, that will be our final and only opportunity to adopt that budget. And if we don't adopt that budget, we then run into serious implications of not being able to operate on July one. So I'd like to have, if we can, um, some of that direction for the City Services Fee coming out tonight, so that if we need to do, um, adjustments to that plan, that can be done.
Okay, so let me go ahead and read there. So next is resolution adjustment of City Service Fee Rate to Support the Recommended Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Seven Budget. Kayla Barbara Prado, our Deputy City Manager, pages thirty-nine to forty-two in your packet.
I would like to move to table this to next week.
Debatable motion.
What would you say, Marilyn?
I, I said that I would like to move to table this to next week.
Tabling is a non-debatable motion. You have to act on it.
Okay, so we'll move it to next week.
We have to act on it. We have to vote on tabling it.
Okay, so we have a motion to table.
I can't say that. Can we discuss this and then?
You help us.
We, we need a second here on this motion.
We have a motion to, to table. We, we need a second.
I'm, I, I have, am I allowed to talk? I don't think so.
Yeah, so.
You, you need a second before you can discuss it.
Okay, I'll second it and then, so we can discuss. Um, so I.
We gotta vote.
Oh, my gosh.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 All those, all those opposed say no?
No.
No.
I don't understand why we can't discuss before the vote. It's non-debatable.
Non-debatable.
Can we have Kayla talk to us about these changes?
Just table the item. Or actually, we haven't tabled.
No, we haven't, there was no, it was a three to two.
Didn't pass, it did not pass. So.
Okay, am I, sorry? Yeah, let's talk about it. I'm just as confused as you.
City recorder, the tabling did not pass, so we can go ahead and have the conversation, correct? Okay.
Okay. So, I do, I did end up providing a lot of what I was gonna talk about earlier, but I do wanna provide a little bit of clarification, because I know council member Newton Azor did come to the back after that, that earlier discussion to ask some further clarifying questions. So, I wanna provide some of that explanation. So, essentially, the reason that we need the, the city services fee piece, and why I recommended addressing the low-income piece as part of that, of that motion, is essentially because we need to have that direction on city services fee for some of those other major adjustments that would release the capacity to be able to have this larger conversation about what the low-income assistance program looks like, which is why I put forward that recommendation of postpone the start of the implementation of the city services fee from that August timeline to an October timeline. If we have that in place, we can then start to bring on some of that capacity, make some of those technology changes that allow us to pull people from some of those very manual processes that we're just trying to keep our head above water, and move them over to looking at what this program looks like. From a, you know, if it's a, because there's a wide range of how you could approach adjusting a low-income assistance program, right? If it is a very simple, we wanna go from, you know, covering fifty percent to covering a different percentage, and just so you know, I did the math in the back. If we wanted those individuals who are on low-income assistance program, on the low-income assistance program right now, to not see a change in their bill, it would be a very simple shift from a fifty percent forgiveness to a seventy percent forgiveness. That is something that is entirely within our control, and is a very simple thing that could be done. Going further to that, you know, if, if it is the direction that the council wants to go to just fully forgiving that, that is also not going to be a make or break item in regards to the budget. Just by the numbers, what we're looking at in lost revenue right now is about fifteen point, it is fifteen point five thousand out of, out of the overall city services fee collection. So, that's not gonna be a make or break. So, even if we doubled the number of people in there, it is not going to get us to, to a space that is gonna be a make or break. So, that's where I was saying earlier, that piece there is not, I'm not worried about that change. Where the capacity piece comes in is if we wanna look at bigger changes. So, you mentioned in the back of the room a concern around the access to the low-income assistance program for people who are maybe not in single-family homes, some of those pieces. Those become much more complex conversations, where we need to be able to have that capacity and redirect some of those resources to be able to work through those. And it is gonna be very, very difficult to do so if we're working under status quo. That has been the big barrier now in being able to address that, that program, and do the in-depth research, knowledge, look at of what these other options could look like. And so, my worry is that we are just gonna get stuck in the same old, same old, and not be able to move forward in a way that actually gives you what you're looking for. Did that provide some clarity? You started to ask the questions back there, and then.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember where, what question I was in the middle of when.
It was on the, it was on the people who are not in a single family home.
So, I know there's some apartments where there's only one meter, right? There's only, so how are they able to access the same low-income assistance program?
Yeah, and the answer is, right now, not. It's not gonna be the same, because our, our low-income assistance program is based on single-family. That being said, that was taken into account with the creation of the city services fee, so those units actually pay a lower rate than the nine dollars.
Like a seven, something like that.
It is. Oh, no, it's frozen.
I think I saw earlier it was seven percent.
Yeah, seven twenty currently, under the revised city services fee, that would be eleven eighty-six. That being said, if that is a bigger piece that the council wants and directs staff to work through, I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing for us to work through, what do those little different options look like? But that is a significant lift, and it's also what weighs in there is the lift that it's gonna take to administer that change. So, right now, because of the investments that need to be, be made in some of these technology spaces, particularly in regards to the munis reset that's included in the budget, that is going to infinitely make it more expensive for us to make changes because of the level of complex manual administration that has to occur alongside that. What then comes in is if we move forward with city services fee and those budget investments with the caveat of delaying the start of the city services fee by a couple months, so that we can bring those options, we now know this is the direction we're going with some of these technology capacity pieces. So, that changes the dynamic of what is reasonable and possible from a staffing side to administer, and brings in options that otherwise are not gonna be a possibility under our existing program, simply because they would be administratively very cumbersome and expensive, and quite frankly, we wouldn't have the people to do. So, that's where I'm trying to, to talk through. There's bigger implications and complexities. I forget who it was in the, the public hearing earlier, who mentioned there's complexity, something that seems really small starts to Band-Aid out, or branch out into all of these other areas. And one of our huge, huge barriers right now is that we have not done these key investments to allow us to do more of these big, what's the right word I wanna look for here? Not innovative, but proactive, change-oriented, more community-responsive programs and adjustments. And that is a key barrier. And I think what I'm hearing from this council overall over the last several months is this is a, this is a council that is very much aimed at, how do we move the city forward? How do we support our residents? And rather than getting stuck in the, you know, this can't be done, is how do we get to a solution? I am trying to get us with this recommendation and move forward to a place where we can start working through those solutions and moving pieces forward. But it's gonna be key for us, because if we have to fundamentally change what that budget looks like next week, which is, it's a result of this conversation, then we're, we're gonna be having a very, very different conversation about what everything looks like, and whether or not we can move changes forward at that point, so.
Any other questions, counsel?
I think when we make these changes, or I'm assuming the, having a later start date of, of October would allow us to have some data collected, correct?
Yeah, so, that would allow us to, yes, get some better understanding. We would have, what is that, two months at least of data from, did the needle even move by removing barriers? That also gives us that period to go back, look at some other options in light of the other changes that are also occurring from a technologies and staffing standpoint within the budget to go, okay, here's a menu of options that could potentially address some of the pieces. I think some of the key information we would want to get from the council is that direction. Is it an issue of the amount? Or is it an issue like you brought up regarding the, the accessibility or who that is, is offered to? Because those are gonna be very different conversations and levels of lift within the staff. So, I think just getting some clarity on that. But this is an area where, because you, as council, set the policy, set the direction, if you want that to be something that is associated with that city services fee, I mean, you can absolutely do that. The, you can amend the recommendation that is in this piece, include that delay of the start, and also provide that direction that you want to see prior to that, options for increases in the low-income assistance program. You can do all of that as part of this. And having that direction, having that clarity on the city services fee, because if we're gonna change that substantially, and I suddenly have to pull out huge portions of that, of that budget before the next meeting, that is gonna look very, very different for you. And we start to run afoul of, are we gonna be able to do that in time for that July one, or June thirtieth date to operate on July one? And part of that is, is, you know, as we go through, generally speaking, you're expecting a lot of major changes to occur coming out of those budget review committee discussions. And because that was a thirteen-one vote, you know, we, we were not expecting this shift. So, it, it puts us in a very complex place at that point.
We wanna discuss, I'm curious what their council members feel for the parameters. So, delays start for, for October, but tying things to making things more equitable and accessible for folks, I wanna hear what other folks.
So. If we make the motion with the amended, with the amendments, we can pass this tonight, so we can be ready for the eighteenth.
Correct, and then we can bring back, depending on, on what the direction is, we can bring back options for that low-income assistance program piece. That would be a conversation that would have, we would have a council, you would get to look at that, and then be able to take the additional action on, okay, this is the direction we wanna go in, you know, kind of based on that, that information. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to speculate on what that looks like yet, because we're just not at that point. That's gonna take, that's gonna take some due diligence with several departments to see what that looks like. But yeah, you would be able to move this forward, be able to get, kind of what I'm hearing from council is this desire to relook at that low-income assistance program that can get, that can hit on all of those.
So, am I understanding you correctly? If you, you're saying that if we pass this tonight, we can still amend it next week, is that?
The, the motion would be to amend it, to start it in October, and then make the adjustments to the low-income piece.
So, the, yeah, the amendment I'm talking about is to the city services fee resolution. So, right now, the city services fee is set to, adjustment is set to start in August. So, what I'm talking about in amending that is amending it from an August start date to an October start date, and directing couns, or directing council, direct staff, sorry. Direct staff to bring back proposals prior to that for what some options could look like with a revised low-income assistance program. This, that's what needs to be is, as part of the, the motion, or what I would, I would recommend. Outside of that, there probably needs to be some discussion from the council, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting, about what is it that you are hoping for from a program like that? Because that will help us, as we take staff and rearrange things, and go back to looking at that low-income assistance program, make sure that we are looking in the right areas, right? Because you mentioned, for example, do we forgive it completely? Council member Newton Azor brought up, you know, addressing multifamily units, people who are on a shared meter. Those are very, very different lifts to achieve and involve different groups and different capacity lifts to administer. And so, that's where having some better direction on what are the goals that you see in reforming that low-income assistance program are, so that we can put staff, focus them in an area that makes sense and brings you back something that really achieves what you're looking for, rather than trying to throw darts at the board and hoping that we hit. Does that make sense?
So, multifamily in the presentation says per unit eleven six, eleven eighty-six.
That, that is when they have their own meter. So, frequently with, if you're in like a duplex or triplex, or even in like some apartment complexes, there will just be one meter, and oftentimes included. Yeah, oftentimes, it's the utilities are in the landlord's name. And so, then the landlord obviously isn't gonna qualify for low-income assistance. And then the, so if you would pay for like, you know, you're, you're part of the duplex. It includes everything except electricity usually, right? I think is what, they have a different way to do electricity. They're unable to then get that low-income assistance, even if they are below poverty level. I'd like to personally, like, see a sliding scale, like where it is. I know we're at sixty percent. Personally, like, I, I looked, I looked at that, it's like, what, thirty-six thousand dollars a year? Like, what can you, what apartment can you even get here in Albany, and then like still pay for like?
And I will say the administration lift, and this is the piece where, until you get behind the scenes and peel it back and see what it looks like from an operational and administration point, if we were getting to the point where we were starting to talk about sliding scales and things like that, and.
Or graduated, maybe, is.
Looking at the city services fee. Because I do also wanna point out that the conversation around the utility side of this is a much, much, much larger conversation than we would be able to have in, in regards to the city services fee portion of this conversation. I could not realistically tell you that we could go through that portion before that October deadline, but we could certainly go through the whole city services side of it and addressing that. But if you start to get on a sliding scale in regards to the city services fee side of it, at that point, the administrative cost to run something like that actually becomes so substantial that at that point, I would just recommend that we do what council member McLeod mentioned earlier, and just say, if you're hitting this level, you are not getting charged that city services fee. That is, that's the reality of kind of the trade-offs of, is the juice worth the squeeze at that point?
Okay, we could just do that. How much would that impact our budget?
Yeah, I offer something.
I'm not numbered down with that.
Yeah, so.
I just wanna, wanna hear the numbers, if we thought it was nominal.
Yeah, so, under the current level of, the current level of people that we have in the program, it's about a hundred and two thousand. And then if you say we double, which would be a huge increase in the, the number of people partaking in that program, it would then be about two or more, so.
So, so, may I ask you a question on my bill? It says low-income assistance on there. So, we, so the ratepayers pick up part of that, correct?
So, we actually don't, so, for the utility side, yes, for the city services side, no. We do not charge an increased rate to others to make that program happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was for utility side only?
Yes, and that's where that becomes, the utility side becomes far more complex, because the utility side has to operate like a business, right? It's an enterprise fund, and that is why that is included in there. And so, if we start opening the worms on the utility side, that's where I'm saying that is a much, much, much larger conversation that we have to have. It's where, again, simple things start to become more complex. But I do think that the city services fee side is absolutely an achievable goal if we know that we have those capacity pieces and other pieces happening.
So, go ahead, please, Van Dremelin.
Just, just a clarifying question. When you say on the utility side, that's like the four units of water that people get credit? Okay, cool, just making sure I have that correct.
Unless you don't have a meter, like unless you're, everything's like included.
Right, understood.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Smith?
It may be helpful to have, to take advantage of the data that, or the demographic information that will be in the annual CDBG plan that we will be reviewing next month. That should get us closer to knowing the income levels of percentages of the population here.
So, I'd like to see this passes with the amendments that Deputy City Manager made, and then have a delayed start date, and have, give her a chance to bring back some information for us.
Can we clarify what the amendments are, please?
The amendments would be, go ahead, please.
The delay of the implementation of the city services fee to October, so right now it was on an August assumption, and then to bring back a proposal, or proposals, if it makes sense, to council for options of adjusting the city services fee side of that low-income assistance program.
So, let's be clear, that means that the people that are currently paying the low, paying the low incomes will stay there until October, because that was just.
Correct, because if we delay out any changes.
It just says stop, it just delays.
The low-income assistance program, as it is set up now, as it was established by council, is set at fifty percent of the city services fee, so there's no change to them until the city services fee actually moves. So, if we delay that implementation to October, they are not seeing a change.
They'll still pay the four fifty or whatever.
Correct, right now, yeah.
But you're also saying that we're, we're able to adjust that fifty percent if we choose before October?
That could be part of that, certainly part of that o- option of discussion, or discussion of options, excuse me, in that, in that July-August timeframe.
But that would not have to be part of the, what's passed today, correct?
The decision on, is it fifty percent, is it? No, no.
Thank you.
No, and I purposely, that's why I'm purposely recommending that delayed start to October, so that you are not being put on the spot to make that decision today, because quite frankly, I could not give you good enough information on that for you to, I think, feel confident in the decision that you are making.
I understand that, and I appreciate that very much.
I would never try to, that's why I was like, let's look at delaying, and then, yeah.
I, I would love to have a little more time to, to make that, to make that decision, so thank you.
So, so, we have a comment over here.
I was gonna make a motion. I, I move to adopt the resolution under consideration with the amendment that implementation be delayed from August first to October first, twenty twenty-five, and to direct city staff to bring recommendations for what would be feasible in terms of adjusting the low-income assistance program by that October first date.
Question to clarify. Counselor McLeod, I think, this is what I heard, was asking if we could make adjustments in the low-income assistance on the city services. in the low-income assistance on the city services fee side as soon as we say that we want to do that, rather than waiting until October first.
So, one, the conversation would come well before October first, because we need a month to enter things into our system and make those changes. So that's where that July-August presentation date is, is coming from, is that is us assuming we'll probably bring you proposals. There will probably be some discussion, there may even be some back and forth that happens. There may even be a secondary meeting that needs to happen. Until we see what that looks like, we just don't know. So I'm building in time, in my mind, to, to allow for a secondary conversation, have that pass, be able to then have the time to enter and move things forward.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the table, but no second.
We have, we have a motion.
And just a clarification on my motion. That is what's feasible to implement by October first, not a presentation by October first, if I was, if I wasn't, my language wasn't clear.
So I have a motion and a second. We got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a roll call, please.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
Yes.
Counselor McLeod?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Order one, thank you. So we'll be bringing that back, we'll be expecting some kind of presentation from you. And also, please, meet with her if you guys have questions, to give her information so she's ready for us.
So for clarity on next steps here, you will see, come back in two weeks, the budget portion of the presentation, so that, that budget adoption piece conversation will come back. And then we will have city staff working through what could the programs work, programs look like for low-income assistance, so that we can get that presentation ahead of you in time for you to have that discussion before that October one implementation, so.
And, and I missed who seconded that.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question. We're, we're not bringing back the budget adoption until the twenty-fifth?
The budget adoption is on the eighteenth.
Yeah, that's next week, two weeks.
Yeah, thank you.
That's one week.
That's one week, yeah. All right, thank you. Next, an item, under action items, is item D. Would be resolutions twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty, capital improvement program adoption. Jeff Babbitt, forty-three and forty-four in your packet? Is he here? Yes. Director Bailey?
Hello. Somebody let Jeff Babbitt go on vacation, so you have me. That was me. So this item is the adoption of the capital improvement program. We held a work session with the council, Budget Committee, and Planning Commission to review the CIP. And that document has been available for public comment. We haven't received any additional comments, so I'm here to answer questions and hopefully get it approved.
Counsel? I didn't have any, I read it through, and I didn't have any problems with it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty capital improvement program as presented. Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, director. Next is resolution intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Central Oregon Community College for Student EMT Internship. Fire Chief LaBelle, pages forty-five to fifty-five in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and council. Also with me is Deputy Fire Chief Kevin Viding. Chief Viding oversees our emergency services. Yeah, he's been in that position for about a year, doing a fantastic job for us. And you'll start to see him appear before council in the future as, as topics come up. So the request this evening is for us to enter an IGA with Central Oregon Community College to allow their paramedic students to come to an internship with our department. This is similar to what we have with Shemekka Community College and Laid Community College. As I've shared with council in the past, recruiting is a challenge for us. And so this is a great opportunity to showcase our department and encourage them, once they become licensed paramedics, to apply with our department and come to the great city of Albany. There is no cost for this, so it really is a win-win for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if they're already.
Counsel, any questions for the fire chief? The deputy fire chief? I have, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution as written on page forty-six of the packet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, counsel, thank you, fire chief, thank you, deputy. Appreciate it.
All right, I think we're up again.
So I've got the next topic.
So next one is the deputy fire chief. Exemption from competitive bidding and special procurement or crisis intervention, peer support training. Is this you, Kevin? Mister Deputy, Deputy Viding, pages fifty-six through fifty-nine in your packet.
Okay, so Albany Fire is requesting approval to enter into a one-year contract with the Center for Developing Hope out of Corvallis to provide licensed clinical treatment for AFD personnel using the special procurement process. Albany Fire Department has maintained an active peer support team for several years. This contract represents the next steps in supporting mental health for our members. In addition to the clinical services, the center will also provide advanced treatment, or excuse me, advanced training for our peers, internal peer support members. And this Center for Developing Hope has been used by the Albany Police Department in the same manner since twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
Counsel?
Comment, I'm glad to-
Please, Counselor Smith?
I'm glad to see this moving into the fire department as well.
Us as well.
Very good idea.
Thank you.
I, I think this is wonderful. I mean, I've seen a lot of high-stress jobs over my career, whether it be firefighters, police officers, EMTs, even football coaches and referees and umpires. And mental health is something that we have pooh-poohed for a long time, and, and training also treatment. So I'm really happy to see that this is moving forward with the fire department. I think we all can benefit from talking to somebody else that has training about the things going on inside of us, the issues we're dealing with. And my wife was the CEO of a mental health facility here in town before it closed. And she had, you know, we, we worked together on making sure she was taken care of, because counselors don't take care of themselves as well as they should. And peer support specialists take on board other folks' issues. So I'm really happy to see her doing this. Counsel, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution on page fifty-eight as written in the packet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, item G. Resolution, street tree planting fees, Director Kim LaDeane, is she still here? Yes, she is. Page sixty and sixty-two, through sixty-two in your packet.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to chat. Real quick on this one. Back in two thousand and seven, we were granted, we being our city forester who's under our department, to be able to charge a fee for developers to pay if they would like for us to acquire, as well as plant and take care of street trees that are required by Article twelve of our Albany Municipal Code. This is one of those that has kind of been out there and hasn't been updated for a long time. As we talk about rightsizing our organization and, and rightsizing fees, this is a big one for us. And so we are coming tonight to request an increase, after many, many years, eighteen years, to, for the fee to be fifteen hundred dollars per tree. And that is going to allow us, most likely developers will not be paying us that fee, and we'll be using one of the wonderful services available with outside contractors, who will still have to follow Article twelve guidelines. But that'll free up about four hundred and fifty hours of estimated staff time between our city forester, our park maintenance and building maintenance manager, as well as additional park maintenance two staff, as well as seasonal staff. So those will be an additional several hundred hours that we will be able to get out and actually continue to work on projects that serve all of our community, not that these don't. But our taxpayers and residents will not be subsidizing this program any longer. Any questions or comments?
Counselor McLeod?
Yeah, I, I, I would like to start by, by, with a comment and then a question. I, I'd like to start by saying that I have a city tree in front of my house, and it had been causing issues with the sidewalk. And I contacted the city before I was a counselor. I contacted the city about this, and you guys came out and were able to take that tree down and put in a new one, and I really appreciate that. Also repaired the sidewalk, put in, put in a new panel. And I really appreciate all the work that, that went into that. My question is, is twofold. It's, it's, it's about the fee. It seems like this is a huge jump from two fifty to fifteen hundred. First part of my question is, how, how did you come to that number? Why don't we start with that? How did you come to that number?
Totally good. So when you take into account the amount of times it takes for our urban forester to plant it, I wanted to mention that our urban forest, for, oh my goodness. Our urban forester is also our natural resource specialist, as well as our arborist for the city. So he wears three hats under forty hours a week. And so the, the planning that goes into that, the acquiring of the tree, we haven't been able to do the physical labor for a long time, so we have to contract out. So it's contract management, as well as paying those additional folks. And then we're responsible for watering the tree for three years in order to establish its health. If it doesn't establish, we have to re-do the whole process again. And so when you take into account all of the, the dollars that go into that, we're at this point paying a little over a thousand dollars per tree. So we have been for a long time by not adjusting this fee. I apologize, it's a sneaker one. We're going through and we're finding these. We've had a lot of growth. And as a result, our department is, is paying that. You can probably find somebody who would be able to do it for, you know, the full process, for a little bit more than that. In all honesty, we don't want to be in the outside tree planting business. We feel like our, our skills and services could be better used in other areas. And so we did price it a little bit higher in order to make it not the cheapest gig in town, so that we're not continuing to have to move in that direction.
Okay, thank you. And so my concern with this, then, is that the contractors are not going to want to pay this fee. Like you said, they're not going to want to pay this fee. My concern is also that they're still going to be putting in trees. And I, I think that, I, I'm just, I'm just kind of spitballing and surmising that they're going to be telling the, the homeowners to take care of these trees, and some of them might not. And this could, this could cause some issues with trees.
Tree health.
Tree health.
And that's something that we'll kind of have to continue to monitor. The city forester will still need to be involved in that process if issues are, are coming about. But the contractors will be responsible, or will need to be responsible for the maintenance for those three years.
So can you, can you talk to how, how they would be responsible for that? If they abandon the trees?
I think it's something at that point, that's a very good question. And I can call up people who are more savvy than I am when it comes to-
Yeah, so good evening, mayor and council. So I, I can respond to that from my time in public works. So the-
Excuse me, sir, sir, can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, we, I introduced you-
Oh, you did already?
Earlier this morning, or this morning, not yet, this evening. So the, the trees that we're talking about, the street trees, are trees that are required through brand-new developments, so new subdivisions, things like that going in. Whenever they put in a new public street, they're required to put in so many trees per feet. So that's part of their public improvement plan, or their, we refer to their SI or site improvement plan, part of their required public improvements. So when they install those right now, they have this option to pay this in lieu of fee, if you will, to, right now it's two hundred-
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars. Rather than plant it themselves, maintain it for three years, including watering and replacing if it dies, they can pay two hundred and fifty dollars per tree to have that done. That's a really good deal. So by setting the fee at a more realistic level, that they're still required as part of their site improvement permit, that they have bonds and warranty periods and all that stuff, they're required to maintain these. So they, they don't have an option to go to the homeowner and say, hey, you know, that's in front of your house, you have to maintain it? That's not a conversation that will happen. The city staff are, they're, they're monitoring those warranty periods. So we're going out and looking at survivability. At the end of those warranty periods, there's usually a, a warranty inspection that we're verifying that everything is as it should be before they're basically handing those over to the city to take over the maintenance. So it's, it's a well-structured program that, that we don't have to worry about the, say, the citizen or the homeowner being burdened with that responsibility. Hope that answers your question.
That perfectly answers my question, thank you.
Hey. Counsel, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the requested fee increase.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you, director.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Matthew.
Have a good evening. Eight is informational briefing and staff reports. East Albany Town Center proposed annexations. Director Rutgers will be speaking, we need another bio break? Not yet. Pages sixty-three to eighty-three in your packet.
Good evening again. Now, just give me one minute to get my presentation up. Kenzie, can you help me? It's not letting me, giving me the option to share. There we go. There we go. It's working.
Sir, could we just take a quick bio break while this is happening?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah.
Let's take ten minutes, go to eight forty-eight. My eyes are starting to burn, like allergies, like goodness gracious. Allergies, like goodness gracious. We have to vote to go past nine o'clock. I imagine this presentation plus the business from the council and executive session is going to do that. I like a motion, probably appreciate a motion to go past nine o'clock.
I'll move to go past nine o'clock to accomplish what needs to be done.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Any opposed?
Oh, no. That'd be opposed. Any opposed?
Well, you didn't ask.
I know, I'm asking. Anybody opposed?
Yes.
Don't make me come over there. Thank you. One opposed.
Albany mayor threatening others to be. Did you get that? Just kidding.
You gotta learn a different thing to threaten a promise.
I'm teasing.
Next, we're starting, we're back in eight, eight. I'm tired. 8:50, 8:00 PM.
Director Rutgers? Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. And the mayor has thrown down a challenge. So we'll see if we can do this in 10 minutes. So I'm here to talk about the East Albany Town Center, um, concept project and proposed annexation. So back in January of 2025, so this year, the council approved staff to, to seek out a grant through the Quick Response Program, which is a program initiated by or done by the Transportation and Growth Management and ODOT. The council approved us to move forward with that grant. And that grant is currently, we're, we're still in the progress of that. We haven't been awarded, but everything looks like we're going to be, um, awarded that grant. Part of the reason for that grant was there was some interest in some properties that I'll, I'll show here in a second. On the east side, near Walmart, that a developer was looking at doing, but also wanted to engage with the QRP, or Quick Response Program for some community engagement pieces as well as conceptual design drawings. So as this process of working through QRP has gone on, the development team has continued to work on potential concepts for this. And I, I want to be clear when we start here and when I talk about potential concepts. The discussion tonight is about proposed annexation. It is not about the development itself. We are at a very, very conceptual level. So I'll be showing some conceptual level drawings. And those are exactly what they are, concepts. And we're talking about potential for annexation. Any development that would occur would go through another land use or two processes that has its own specific, um, public engagement piece, notification, public comment, and potentially depending on the type of application, it would be going before Planning Commission and possibly even this council. So I just, I wanted to kind of put some sidebars on the discussion tonight that as we look at truly concept style drawings, that they are just that, concepts. It's not the final development plan by any stretch of the imagination. So with that, so the East Albany Town Center. What are we looking at? So the, the project area that we're referring to is just for a point of reference, you kind of see a rectangular piece on the right side of the highlighted circle. That's the Walmart. So the project may include up to about plus or minus 30 acres. As, as I said, this conceptual project, they continue to work with adjoining property owners and it, it may get smaller, it may get bigger. It's located south of Highway 20, west of Gold, west of Goldfish Farm Road, and north and east of Spicer. It's generally shown inside that project area right there. So the, this project is located within the East Albany Plan, a plan that was adopted by council back in, go ahead. Do you have a question?
I'll just wait.
Adopted by council back in 2023. And the, the development group has been working on that. I will note they are, they're here in the audience tonight. I won't call out each of their names, but it's East Albany Town Center LLC. Gerding Developers is also back here, Gerding Construction. Hancock Commercial Real Estate and Nicole's Irish are here in representation, just expressing their interest obviously in, in this presentation. So within the East Albany Plan, the general, since it's not annexed yet, it doesn't have zoning. It does have a comprehensive plan designation. That comprehensive plan designation is village center. Well, there, there's various designations, but village center, commercial and residential. That's what it's kind of planned for. And, and within the, that comp plan designation, the village center especially and the residential pieces, we, we talk about density and where we'd like to have more density. You want to locate your higher density areas within close to services, transportation, transit, as well as, well, yeah, services. And that's where that village center piece comes in. It is a mixed use style designation. And the original parcel is part of the QRP, as highlighted in blue there, as they've continued to work on concept drawings and talk to adjoining property owners that, that may expand some. So we talked about the project concept again, just concept drawing. I provided the, the slides in advance. So hopefully you guys had a chance to take a look at those because I won't go through all these numbers in detail. But you will see that they're shooting for a gross density of about 25 units per acre with a mixed, uh, style of different types of housing, ranging anywhere from single family all the way up to town homes and six over ones or lower floor commercial with residences up above. And, and that's, that would be allowed in that village center comp plan designation. And also along with that, they, part of the, the concept includes a community center and relocation of the VFW Post 584 and some potential for some veterans housing. And I'll just quickly step through some of the concept drawings here. This is again, concept drawing, looking from the south to the north. You see Walmart on the right-hand side there. Looking from the east to the west. And then again, from the, the south to the north, you'll see timber extension coming down with the two roundabouts right there. Where it's going to tie back into Spicer. And this is kind of the overall project concept map that provides a little bit more detail as to number of units and where they're located there. Now with that, uh, we get into kind of the infrastructure piece of this. You know, why, why am I here? Why are we having this conversation? So for, for many years now, uh, the, the extension of timber is, it's been in our CIP for a number of years. It's Project L4. We've, as the city, attempted to get funding from the state multiple times whenever we have the opportunity. This is one of our higher priority projects because it solves the problem of fescue and the interchange, which is, as we've talked before and you've heard Public Works talk, is challenging of having a, basically a resident or not a resident street, a city street pointed right at an off-ramp is, is, is a big no-no. So the fix for that, that's been identified not only in, in the TSP or Transportation System Plan, but also the East Albany Plan, is the timber extension. And that's been in there for well over a decade. So that, that's, that's why we're here. As we look at, uh, potential development in this, the city's kind of looked at this as well, the infrastructure cost for this is, is huge. And realizing that we'll probably, we planned on, we're, we're going to have to do this ourselves. That's why it's been in the CIP. Having a developer that comes in and is interested in this and that does not scare them away, provides an interesting opportunity for the city. But let's talk a little bit more about what those improvements are. So again, noted in the Transportation System Plan as required improvements for any development that would occur there. It includes the extension of Timber Street to the south to Spicer Drive, two roundabouts, connection to Maple Leaf and Spicer Drive off the middle roundabout or upper roundabout, as well as a signal at Highway 20 and Timber, which those, just to note, those are off-site improvements that are not tied to this development specifically, but would have to occur kind of in that same, same time period. When we look at what, what does the Timber Street extension look like? So this is right out of our Transportation System Plan. This is the conceptual section for it. It's a minor archery, approximately 80 feet wide and right-of-way. It'll be five lanes wide, which includes two bike lanes, two travel lanes in each direction, a center turn lane, curb and gutter and sidewalk on both sides, as well as a landscaping strip on both sides. So the, the question that, that you may have, and, and some people ask is, well, well, why? Where's, where's the benefit? For the city, the, the benefit is actually, um, it, it's two-pronged. It benefits not only the, the, the city, but also the developer. From the city side, we secure land that's vital for infrastructure at the appropriate time. And the EA, the East Albany Town Center and associated, associated properties that may annex in with them, if, should it just go that path. It'd be the first step towards their development of their conceptual project. You know, and this exchange also would support the coordinated growth, improved transportation connectivity, and efficient delivery of urban services, as well as implementation of the East Albany Plan and our Transportation System Plan. So it's, it's kind of a, an, an opportunity at this time as you have a developer that's willing to take on the challenge of development and the city saying, well, what do we have to bring to the table? And that would be where I come into a recommendation. So staff recommendation here would be for council to direct staff to, um, annex or begin a city-initiated, initiated annexation of the East Albany Town Center properties, as well as any other properties as, as they continue through their conceptual design process and through the QRP process that we were quite confident will be getting that grant and engaging with the community to talk about design and what this looks like. Any other properties that kind of come along that would, would meet the criteria for annexation, which means they have to be adjoining. We're not going to be bringing in people, you know, islands out there that would voluntarily consent to annexation. And this is very similar to the process that we just went through in 2024, where we did a voluntary annexation process along with some required annexation cleanup items that we're doing of some right-of-ways and, um, properties that were served outside of the city. So it, it's not uncommon. We, like I said, we just wrapped up one of these. So it, it's not uncommon, we, like I said, we just wrapped up one of these, but just to be clear, I know this was a current concern when we went through that process, when we talk about other properties that may not be directly included right now, that would be completely voluntary on their, their part. We wouldn't be reaching out to property owners and saying, hey, guess what, there's this conceptual development that's being considered, they're annexing in right now, we're going to make you annex. That is not what we're talking about here, this would be voluntary only. And then if the council were to authorize staff to, to move forward with a city-initiated annexation process, we'd also ask that you authorize us to negotiate and draft a development agreement with our East, with the East Albany Town Center Development Team for future consideration with council. And that would kind of capture that exchange of, you know, as we're annexing in, there's also pieces that, dedication of right-of-way that we'll need for timber, things like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, I am two minutes past what I said I would do, I know I was moving fast, and that's a lot of information, so.
Well, council, Council Smith has two questions.
Simple ones. What number, what are the number of property owners involved in this?
Cur, well, currently, the, the East Albany Town Center parcels proper, they've got those properties under contract, as, as I understand. As they further refine that concept, and as they've talked to adjoining property owners, I don't have the exact number for you, Councilor Smith, but I think we're probably at least three or four. Most of those, those properties that they're, we're talking about are owned by the ROP family, and there's multiple other owners out there which they've been working on. And the City of Albany actually owns a couple of the properties that we've acquired over the years for the roundabouts themselves.
What, my other question is, what's the potential impact or impediment of wetlands?
Well, hi.
That's one, that's a big reason those properties are vacant, is that right?
Correct. As, as the, you know, if, if and when, you know, th, these properties are within our urban growth boundary, right? They're intended to be annexed and developed at some point in time. Any development process that comes through, whether it be now, in 10 years, in 20 years, they will have to address the, the wetlands issue, whether that be through onsite mitigation or purchasing of wetland credits or some other tool. But there are wetlands out there, they will have to be addressed as part of any development, whether it be this one or the next one.
Councillors, Council, I saw Council Newton first, Newton Azar first, and then Council MacLeod.
Do we know what the anticipated impact on traffic and transportation systems, especially around Knox Butte, Timber Ridge, and nearby schools might be?
That was all part of that East Albany Plan that we did. That was, the, the East Albany Plan was actually funded, like I say, through that, that Transportation Growth Management, so it's, one of its main focus was transportation and connectivity. So as they looked at that Timber Extension, like I said, that, that's been in our Transportation System Plan for well over a decade, and it was reevaluated with the East Albany Plan. As far as impact, you, so I guess the, the short answer is, Timber, the extension of Timber is, is designed, and I'm not a traffic engineer, just to be clear, it is intended to be able to handle that, that's why you see in the presentation I refer to, in inner, a signal up at Highway 20. In any development that comes through, especially if it were this development or some other one to this scale, where you're generating more than 100 trips, you're going to be doing a traffic impact analysis, where they're going to be looking at all those pieces, and ODOT will absolutely be involved.
I have a few questions, do you care if I just ask them all now, or do you want to?
Your time.
And maybe I missed this, because I'm a little, maybe a little tired, and maybe I missed it. Infrastructure investments that will be made in order to support this development, who's paying for all of those?
So the, in most development scenarios, the infrastructure for anything that's shown on the Transportation System Plan, or that's going to be touching their development, whether it be on their frontage or supporting internally of it, is the responsibility of the developer. And then we're going to start to get into the weeds pretty quickly on this. But when you talk about a major or minor archery like this, which is over and above what a local street standard is, that's where the C I P comes into play. We have projects that are funded on the C I P list, which means they're eligible for T S D C or, well, they're eligible for S D C credits. And just generally how those credits work is, we're, we're giving them credit for everything that was over and above what basically a local street standard would be. And those credits come into play, they get to apply them to, to the development itself. So if you say, if they're building a single-family home, and I'm just going to throw out round numbers, because Chris Bailey tells me never do math in public, so.
That's good advice.
So say your, your transportation S D C is $4,000 for a single-family home, but you installed this much bigger street section and you have an S D C credit, well, you get credit for the, this is where it gets into the weeds, the I portion of that, so the improvement portion of the S D C. And so when they come in to pull their building permit for that home, they don't have to pay that portion if there was credit there. Now, the trick is, if there's funding pointed at that project that would allow for, that basically funded that T S D C credit, and part of that is, and it's a great question, Councilor Newton Azar, is, the reason that you see on here, one of the recommendations is authorizing staff to negotiate and draft a development agreement, that's where we start to get into those, the nitty-gritty of those details.
And this might be me now putting the cart before the horse, but do we have any idea of, like, projected fiscal impacts for annexing these parcels, like, in regards to, like, their revenue from property taxes or costs, like, in regards to, like, infrastructure or public safety? Or am I just, like, going way ahead? Okay.
Concepts, right.
Okay, concepts of a plan, I guess, right? My last question is, I'm curious about how many nearby residents and property owners have been informed and engaged in the annex, in this annexation process?
So currently, the, the development team has been out talking to property owners, I, I haven't been, you know, that, they've done that on their own, and I applaud them for doing that, that's fantastic. As we go through, you know, if we move forward with a city-initiated annexation, it runs the same type-four process that a standard annexation does, so there is public notice. We will be going to Planning Commission, and we will be coming back to council. Multiple opportunities for public comment, as well as through that Quick Response Program Grant, which we anticipate getting, will be out there, multiple meetings, some of them open house style or charrette style, where we're engaging with that community out there. So there, there will be ample opportunity for engagement all the way through this process, whether it be through this first step of annexation, should, should that be what the council decides to do, or as we move past that into the actual land use portion, that goes through yet another land use process, where you've got public notice, opportunities for public comment.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Council MacLeod.
Thank you. A couple things, first, and I know this has been addressed in previous council sessions with previous councils, can you speak to how an annexation like this would affect our local schools, how many new students we, we might expect, and what the impact might be and what that process is? I know it's been discussed before, but I'd just like to bring that up again.
It, it, it's absolutely a great question. So the Greater Albany Public Schools, the district itself is involved in our development review process, so anytime we have a new land use development, we are notifying them that. They have their own team that are looking at the existing student population and how full the schools are, and it's a great question, understanding that Timber Ridge and Meadow Ridge are full. And so those are, a project of this side, we, we would likely be engaging a little bit more heavily with GAPS. I don't mind saying this, but I have a good connection with the GAPS superintendent, he was actually one of my high school teachers, and so, but there, that relationship is key in understanding as new developments coming in, so they can anticipate needs for schools, or class sizes, things like that.
So what you're saying is that GAPS would be informed of any changes, and it's up to them to make those adjustments for projected increase in students?
Correct. We, as a city, we don't have the ability to look at the school district and say, you need to build a new school, it's just not something we can do, that's done at a school board level.
Yeah, thank you. And secondly, I know this is not about the conceptual site plan, but it's included in the packet, so I'd just like to make a quick comment on it. I see that there is a sports courts on this, on this plan, that is, looks to be within approximate earshot of about 200 units, and having lived within earshot of a basketball court in the community, I, I would, I would urge you not to do that unless you want 500 people upset that they can hear basketballs bouncing in the middle of the night. Please reconsider that, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors over here. Councilor Thompson.
So, you know, I don't live in this area, but I understand, like, the roots over I-5, like, the intersection of I-5 and Saniam, Highway 20, get, get backed up at times. So how, you know, that's not, that's not us, that's ODOT eventually.
And so, so the Quick Response Program Grant does, it includes ODOT, it's ran partially by ODOT. East Albany Plan, that was funded through that T G M grant, so that, you know, any development, similar to what I was referring to with GAPS, when we get to that point of development, where ODOT is absolutely included in that development review, review process, and providing comments where there are impacts to, to what would be their highway system that we, we don't have control over, but there is certainly a lot of coordination there.
I understand that, and the key phrase, we don't have any control over, I appreciate the question of Councilor MacLeod, and one of our Budget Review Committee members just generally talked about growth and, and the schools. And I can tell you, you're right, you're right, the city coordinates thoroughly with GAPS, and lets them know plans, and GAPS works with Portland State, it does estimates about growth. But it's, we, we sit in here, and we have these discussions with planners, I mean, if it was up to planners, and I know you're not planner, if it was up to the experts, we wouldn't have a traffic problem anywhere, we wouldn't have crowded schools anywhere. It's ultimately a political decision by us, and the decision is, all I see in this program, I know it's too early to talk about, but all I see is high density coming to Albany, and there's no way, it, it would, it would be amazing if we planned for it so perfectly that there wasn't a resultant traffic issues and crowded schools. That's what happens. And the crowded schools do get, they get attacked, attacked, they get, the problem gets dealt with eventually, because the only way you build a school, they don't have, the GAPS doesn't have funding, they, they have a construction excise tax, that gets you, like, modular structures, it gets you some extra busing to try to organize your, your buildings you do have, it does not get you new buildings, it's nowhere near getting you new schools. You have to go out to the voters and pass a bond. So it's, it's ultimately a political decision, and we talk in, in, in this, we talk in local government, and we have the experts come in and tell us, but you have to decide, we have to decide. It's, it's about vision, and it's about what you want, and it's never a good, there's never a good, correct answer. It's never, you know, and so, that's what I hear, I hear this, well, we can attack this, and we'll fix that, and I, and I get it, but it's, I'm just telling my fellow council members, it's ultimately a, a decision of what you want, and I'm, I'm just very reticent to, to these, these plans for increased density in a city, in a community. You want to talk, here, I'm getting a little bit of a soapbox, why did we have such a gigantic GAPS bond in 2017? Because we let the schools get so fill before we talk, full, before we talk about building a new school. We are a community that wants to use every last ounce of something before we start to pay for something new. And I just see us pushing, not just, not just now, but in, in the councils the last few years, pushing towards a, a community that has high tax and high service, and I just don't think that's what, that's not what my neighbors want, that's not what people that I talk to want.
And, and I'll touch on something just real quick, you, and you talked about, you know, visiting, and I'm not, I'm not disregarding anything that you say, you know, the East Albany Plan spent a lot of time engaging with the community and talking about that vision, which is why you see the, the resulting, like, village center designations, and specifically in these areas was on purpose. As you look at Timber unlocking a lot of the industrial unemployment land that's just south of there, the hope is that you are creating density, but you're hopefully creating people that are not driving their cars, that are taking transit system, that are able to use other forms of transportation, whether it be being able to walk to work, or biking to work, I mean, and I'm, like I say, I'm not, not arguing about your point there, it's well-taken, it's just, there is, the, I guess my point is, with that East Albany, we spent a year and a half on the East Albany Plan, multiple community engagement events, listening to folks, it, it all fed into knowing that, that there are all types of housing needs, and some of those are those apartment-style, high-density types of needs, where best do we put this? And that's why you see this in this location, where you've got those services that are, that are easily accessible, and the connections that Timber will create to make that easier. I'm not, I'm not trying to, like, say downplay anything that you've said, it's just that, that's the reason.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, that's good.
Anything else?
No.
Council Van Gemmelen? Council Smith?
So I personally think, when we adopted the East Albany Plan, that I didn't think we'd be this far ahead now. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this, it's a long process, but I think that getting started versus waiting like the bridge that we want to cross the river, we should have started talking about a bridge 25 years ago, and putting actions in place so we can have a bridge across the river. I think that we are a private city, it's a city that's growing, a state that people are coming to, and we have a housing shortage, a huge housing shortage, I mean, I go to the meetings for L M Association of Realtors, Mortgage Association, and we have a huge housing shortage, and this is going to solve, and it also, what I'm looking at, or what I've talked about with, with the team, is that there's a house for almost every income level, including affordable housing, and also the people with the big dollars, so, it's, and also can be mostly generational, which I think is a great way to go forward.
So council, do we have a motion?
I'd like to, I'll move to direct staff to proceed with the annexation of properties that want to be annexed for the East Albany Town Center concept, and further to authorize staff to negotiate and draft the, a development agreement for future council consideration. I like development agreements, I, I think that they go a long way to reassuring future neighbors of what, what's going to happen, or could happen. They give the, they give the, the local government a measure of control to make sure that that's carried out.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, under tonight's, tonight's agenda is business from the council, I missed you last time, sir, so we're going to start with Councilor Van Gemmelen.
I, I have no business to bring tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilor MacLeod, he's your partner.
Sure, I'll start with Happy Father's Day to all the bio dads, foster dads, step dads, bonus dads, granddads, uncle dads, cat dads, dog dads, chicken dads, and wannabe dads. I appreciate the hard work that you do every day, I will be celebrating with my daughter's bonus dad, and thinking of all the other dads in my life as well. I also wanted to address the traffic cameras that were mentioned during public comment. I'm sorry?
Sue Horvath.
Sue Horvath, thank you. I, I like the idea of the flashing lights to indicate when the 20 mile per hour enforcement is in place. I've also been flashed by the cameras at one of those intersections without remembering that it was a school day, and I have a kid in GAPS, so I know it's real easy to do. I would love to see the flashing signs as a reminder of which speed limit is in place at any given moment. I personally have started setting my vehicle on cruise control at 20 miles per hour when I approach the intersection, but I know that's not an option for everyone, so I, I really would like to see those, those flashing lights. Can we, can we find out how to do that? How do we do that? How do we get those?
We'll come back with a response for that.
You will? Okay, when should we expect that response?
Well, probably the, the 9th of July, I'm thinking, or, what, what? Or, I'll, I'll let you know.
Will it be on, will it be an agenda item or?
Well, it won't be. It'll probably come under business from the city manager.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Counselor Newton Azar?
So Sue's comments, great, but I also had spoken with someone else, Dan Foster, also in North Albany. And he was wondering the same thing, if we could get flashing lights. He said he has five kids at Oak Ridge, like all in elementary school. Impressive. But he did not know that the middle school was open when the elementary school was closed. So would also like to see some flashing lights. If it's all about, about, all about student safety, let's get them added.
Good.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Um, I spent two hours last night listening to another city council discuss their transportation system plan and plans to update their transportation SDC. So I, I think I've, I'd rather talk about something else for the rest of this evening. I don't have anything pertinent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, counselors. I would like, so city services fee, I would like, I would appreciate it if each counselor could email our deputy city, city manager, what your thoughts were on what it would look like for the city service for low income. Isn't that cool? Can we do that?
Can we do that? Isn't that a?
No, just send them what ideas you have. Is that, is that against the protocol?
That sounds like something that should be discussed.
I would suggest that you do it in a, in an open session.
Open session? Okay.
Yeah, we don't want any back and forth.
Oh, I got you. So what I was thinking, they just sent her an email directly. But I guess that's the principle.
Well, it, I mean, it, it's good for the public to hear you discussing what your, what your desires and your priorities are.
On the 25th, we can have, have, yeah, 25th come back with, and then share it with the council. I'll bring something back as well. I would like to see community conversations around, at least one community conversation around the city services fee. We did it the first time and we had some really lively conversations. I think one or two conversations about the city services fee would be great. You know, I, I go to the assisted living communities and the independent living communities, but having something at like the RCC or something at Cascade Grill, out for, Cascade Grill, not Cascade, yeah, Cascade Grill for Ward Three would be great. So you know, one or two, maybe three, that'd be fantastic. And then today is, what, what day is this? 11th or 12th?
11th.
So tomorrow is for me, a very special day because when I was born in 1965, there was no pathway for me to marry my wife. And June 12th, 1967, Loving v. Virginia enabled people by law to marry interracially with this person they love. So our 40th anniversary is coming up and I'm pretty excited about that. And so other than that, I'm done and I would like to have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me rephrase my answer to Counselor Monague. We'll get an answer back as soon as possible.
McLeod.
McLeod.
I was looking at the calendar and trying to come up with actual dates, but we'll get it back as soon as we can.
Counselor McLeod.
What did I say?
You said Monague.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm looking straight at you. Okay. To let you know that the fire chief had let me know earlier this evening that the Wasco Fire has now reached the point of being a conflagration. So four of our firefighters are being sent there. So you, once again, it's a reminder that this is the beginning of a pretty, what I anticipate will be a pretty tough season, fire season. And then you now have a meeting next week on the 18th of June is your second meeting for the budget. So that'll be next Wednesday night. But the, but I can tell you that the meeting on the 23rd of June, which is a work session on Monday, we've been able to cancel that one just because of agenda workload. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. You have an executive session to follow.
This agenda was packed, my goodness.
Can you repeat which meeting you just canceled?
Sure. The 23rd of June, the work session on the 23rd of June. And I'll, I'll send you guys an update in the Friday email too.
Number 11 on your agenda, we're going to recess to executive session. Refer to executive session script. Let me go over here. The city council will now meet in executive session to consult counsel concerning legal rights and duties of public body with regards to current litigation or litigation likely be filed in accordance with ORS 192 dot 660, sub paragraph two, sub paragraph H, and to consider the dismissal or disciplining of a, or here complaints of charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request, who did not request an open hearing in accordance with ORS 192 660, dot 660, subsection two, subsection B. Representatives of the media, news media or designated staff and other persons will shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will be moved into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmet those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members will must leave the council chamber and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, the staff will open the doors and you can rejoin the meeting. Representative of news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session.
This is officially the longest city council meeting I've ever had.
I was gonna say, we waited, was it one, one sub in the morning?
Well, my, my very first city council meeting was four and a half hours.
Yeah.
I got sworn in that night.
And it started seven fifteen and not six, so very late.
Next me, the next meeting dates, next meeting dates are Wednesday, June eighteenth at six P M for uh, for the budget discussion, follow-up discussion if necessary. Monday, June twenty-third, it has been canceled. And Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five at six P M for regular meeting. I will adjourn the meeting.